Good evening and welcome to the San Bernardo City Council Special Meeting of April the 29th, 2025. Meeting is going to hold at all local offices.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here, thank you. We, the city council will go into a closed session, conference with labor negotiations. I will say that we will go for no more than 10 minutes, and even if we are not concluded, we will be back out, and we will then finish this at the end of the meeting so we can get to the business of the special meeting. So, city council going in closed session. Closed session, there is no reportable action at this time, we'll move on to the conduct of business.
Downtown? Downtown paid parking program update.
Thank you, I know we have a few presenters and some folks in the audience to assist and answer questions through this process. So, why don't we go ahead? Janice, please, this evening. And you?
Thank you, Mary, council, tonight we're going to give a paid parking program update and answer some questions that you've required since our way up to here. So, who's going to be here this evening and who are representing for the city? Myself, interim chief Susan Manheimer, Captain Jeremy Brandeber, Scott, traffic sergeant Juan Yonias, our food services officer, and from T2 Systems, we have Joe Wyler and Andrew Kenniken. And from LAS, we have. And I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague.
Meeting council, just going to provide a little bit of our background as part of this presentation. Maybe you guys have seen this slide before, a few presentations. 2009, the general plan talked about parking programs. 2013, the general quarter plan also talked about a need for paid parking. Downtown parking management plan study that was done in 2019. The fiscal year, that went on to fiscal year 2020, 2021, where the paid parking program was added as one of the council's strategic initiatives. And in 2023, the police department moved forward to contract fully approved T2 Systems and LAS as the solution to those last year plans and research from above. So, the purpose of the paid parking program to address fairly impacted parking in and around the downtown. As part of that 2019 study, it was well documented that some of the occupancy rates during the daytime hours were over 100% of occupancy. There was notes for lack of available parking, and the top reason for people's not shopping in downtown is part of their community outreach. It's part of that 2019 study. There's public safety concerns with congestion, pedestrians, double parking, all the way to the need for more available parking spaces. So, the paid parking program was the solution that was presented by the consultant in 2019. The goals of those programs are to influence parking, better parking behavior, increases parking turnover, create shorter term parking on the street and longer term parkers in the lots. We were seeing as part of that study that a lot of the merchants and workers in the downtown would park on the street instead of in the lots. We were trying to influence that behavior to allow for more short term parking on the actual avenue. And then, funding capacity to underwrite infrastructure enforcement and contracted personnel needed to be identified to implement the program. This slide has also been a part of several presentations in the past, except for reference, if you want to go to the end of the timeline. But it started in 2022, when the police department first put on the strategic initiative, and we ended in first deployment in 2024 of a kiosk in the downtown, and 2020, May of 2024 was the first enforcement actions. That was April of 24, in the kiosk. That's the map reference of the paid zones, that was the main residential value, and the eight city lots that are part of this paid parking program. And then, as a reminder of the current rates that have been set today in the lots and downtown. So, one other question is, how's it going? We've done some more fiscal counts of the downtown, not only using our partners and ourselves, which is to give you the fiscal observations. We believe we're still hitting that 80% target of utilization. Since April of 24, when the program went live, it's a market point, pretty much 25. We calculated that at 371,705 transactions from the kiosks. Kiosks for mobile pay in the downtown parking area. 1.225 million in revenue has been generated, but we are still continuing to see technical issues that may have been resolved as last on the ground, here with T2 Services, what it involved.
Thank you, I'll take it from here. Mayor, councilmember, city manager, thank you. Susan Manheimer, interim chief. So, I was, it may have been my first meeting for Pam and myself, when the council brought up seven items to bring back for a special session, which we are having tonight. And I was charged with that, I did some research, we brought ourselves up to speed, and I'll take a bit of what we've been doing since, given that direction by city council, over the past 90 days. In February of 2025, at that staff meeting, we were directed to bring back seven items to you. Those are items are listed here. T2 and their responsiveness to the kiosk malfunctions, balancing enforcement, which was seen as rather aggressive in the downtown area, making the kiosk free on city holidays and denoting that on the welcome slide for the kiosks. Analysis of the elimination of paid parking during certain hours of the day, and then Sundays. Syncing paid parking time limits at the street parking kiosks and parking lots. T2's ability to reprogram kiosks to accept cash in terms of bills. Analysis of the elimination of parking kiosks on El Camino Real. We engaged in that comprehensive 90-day review, and you can see all of the different departments involved in that. I will say, we're very appreciative to bring in all of the other agencies and entities to work with us, and thank you to Pam and the city manager for really herding all of us together to really get to this point tonight. We reviewed past reports, agreements, and communications, all of the different reports that came to you as city council over this past year, and had a lot of discussion and on-the-ground problem solving with T2 Systems and LAS parking, our enforcement parking entity, and they are both here with us tonight. We do have recommendations for city council, as noted in response to your questions. First of all, I will say that there has been, over this past year, a series of troubleshooting and issues that have arisen with the different kiosk malfunctions, and over the past month or so, T2 has been on the ground with us, meeting troubleshooting and doing very intensive maintenance and work with the two weeks of on-the-ground support, which we've seen again for this week. They have worked a lot with us, they have provided both routine maintenance, they've done software updates, they have done intensive troubleshooting at technical and hardware software replacements. They have been, over the past several weeks, engaged in what some of what we have been seeing. They fixed the technical issues, some of them came back, and really, it was through a system of deduction that I think we've gotten to a point tonight where they have a path forward that they believe is going to really stabilize the kiosk performance. Our conclusion thus far is that what we've really seen is that that level of complex technical updates required due to the continuous issues and the needed technical expertise, along with this higher level of really maintenance and technical troubleshooting, is something that we do not have in-house. And you'll see, that is one of our recommendations tonight for a dedicated meter technician. So, let's get into some of the issues you've raised for us, and I'll cover a few, and then really let Pam take it over for really the fiscal and the analysis in fact here. Balanced enforcement by LAS parking. That was a constant issue when I came on board, was the level of sort of aggressiveness of the enforcement in the downtown. And what I really learned was that that had really been a carryover to change the behavior as we started the parking program, and never really got to the point where it was stabilized enough that we didn't need LAS in the downtown area to kind of work on the technical issues with us. We met with several of you all, we met with some of the merchants, and what we decided to do was spread that enforcement out over multiple areas to reduce that focus in the downtown area. As the program had matured, we found the compliance was increasing, and so now, we really prioritize sort of all of the different areas of the city, complaints as they come in, and we've evened out the enforcement in the downtown area. I think we have heard that from merchants, feel free to let us know if you've heard otherwise, but it seems as if we are ready to move on to a second phase. The next issue is multi-layered. I think there were several things. One is, the kiosks are definitely free on city holidays. You have an example of a sticker that we're going to be putting on the meters, which I outlined those holidays, and I think you knew from our last report, that one of the holidays had been skipped and that was programmed in. So, now, we'll have those, these will go on the meters, I believe, Public Works, who's here, is working with us on that, and those should go on, you should see those soon, those will be anti-graffiti material, and they will go on the meters. The bigger issue and question that came to us, that we're still sort of the, in discussion with T2, even as frequent and as pre-frequent as today, is can we put on the welcome screen, when you walk up to the meter, that it's a free holiday today, no need to pay? And so, our understanding was, at the macro level, that that was very hard to program in and would require really on-the-ground support from our staff. And in further discussions, I think that T2 has found a workaround. I don't want to make too many promises, because we still have to have proof of concept on this, and I think it is going to require a lot of programming on our end. My understanding on this, and you may want to ask T2 a little bit later if they come up, is that the screen now will indicate welcome, and you know, as they start to put in their license plate, they will then get the announcement that it's free today, there's no money necessary. My understanding from councils, they wanted that on the welcome screen, so that they would know that and wouldn't have to go through the first steps. Instead of being a direct message, the workaround would be that they could program in, in advance or during that day, a text message that would be on the welcome screen, and only for that day. That's on the T2 side. My understanding is, on our side, there'd be a significant amount of programming that would go into IRIS for that. What level of technical support is needed, we're still not sure. Hopefully, if we hire the meter technician, I don't want to get too granular, but I think we're still trying to work through proof of concept on whether that actually will work on the ground, but that is something that I can assure you, we'll put the stickers on, and hopefully get to a workaround that meets your interest on that one. Pam?
So, in your staff report, I answered and put some information with regard to just 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. Initially, those were the time periods that the council had asked for information. In looking at some of the questions the council asked ahead of the meeting, finance put together this wonderful chart, which actually kind of breaks down, it breaks down the entire revenues that are coming in, both with the street meters and the lot meters, as well as citations. I think it's important for the questions that council had, to understand which time of day, as you make considerations of possible changes, that you are considering and taking a look at that. Before we deep dive into that, I'm just going to remind the council a little bit about some of the things that we did to assist the business community when the program started. You might recall that we gave each business totaling about 100 free permits for the lots, and those are well utilized. It's a little difficult to determine what the potential loss of revenue would be, because we don't know when people use those, they just use them when they're parking in the house. We also gave the business owners with proof of business employment a reduced parking rate for monthly parking. That we were able to show how much that takes away from the revenues, but definitely it drives the employee parking from the street and doing that survey of moving your car every couple hours. It's been very successful in moving, moving parking into the lots, which is where we want a long time parking those to go. The first question that you asked that I'll cover tonight was saving the time limits for the streets kiosks and parking lots in that. You might recall that former chief, Police Chief, talked a little bit about, as well as our consultant, who did the parking study many years ago, that the differing time periods really provides choices for the people that are parking, and it also, again, drives longer term parkers to the lots. The difference in the time periods between the lots and the kiosks do drive the longer term lots, and they are a core part of the assumptions that were made in the parking program from the beginning, which also informs how your rates are determined. Specifically to the three time periods that we asked about in terms of eliminating paid parking on days and time periods, specifically was 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. I think that the feedback that we're receiving from the business community is, this is not a busy time during the day, and as a result, is it possible to eliminate that from your paid parking enforcement? The second time was 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and so what we tried to do in the same vein is show you what that potential loss could be in both meter revenue and citation revenue. And then finally, I know that the council has questions about eliminating on Sundays any type of enforcement, because there are other areas of cities that would not involve Sundays. And before I remind, I want to make sure that we had a lot of discussion about how to set this up so that it was easy to read, and I apologize, because I think it can become very confusing with the different times of days. But when we dig into it a little bit more, let me know if there's something that we can recommend. We definitely have the folks that actually put together the numbers for us. And then, the other thing that we talked about, or that you asked about, was eliminating eliminating kiosks on El Camino Real. That is an area that has a much lower usage, much in part due to the fact that many of those businesses have their own parking lots attached to the business. My understanding is that, at the time that the kiosks were installed and the contract was led, the thought process was that there's a potential greater usage of those kiosks down the road if higher density projects are built, and it's always less expensive to have everything installed at once, rather than installing a much smaller amount of meters down the road. It's a small loss in potential revenue, should the council decide to eliminate the kiosks. We did have some discussion internally as to whether or not we should just cover those kiosks or remove them. I would recommend if you eliminate the kiosks, that you actually remove them, because it's very confusing to people. When they see kiosks, the coverage can sometimes get real torn, that's another thing. And then, finally, as Chief mentioned earlier, the kiosks will be reprogrammed to accept cash. I think you reported on this a time ago, but just wanted to let you know that there are other kiosks. Unfortunately, the one that we purchased does not have the ability to add a functionality to accept dollar bills. Another kiosk accepts dollar bills and not coins, and at the time that these were purchased, they were purchased for the point of purchase. It does accept Apple Pay and Google Pay, and then, there are some cities that are moving away from the credit card and debit card, but we do have quite a high percentage of customers that do use the points. About 10% of our revenue comes in from point of purchase. And so, next steps are that we will work with T2 Systems, LAS, and the city for the all of the programmatic things that are happening with that, but before we go into some of that, I wanted to give some time to ask some questions, particularly around the financial data.
David?
Did you want to complete it?
And as earlier, as earlier mentioned, tonight we're asking that the council authorize 120,000 dollars in additional funding for a contracted meter technician position. It will be a contracted position that will assist us with the technical programming, et cetera, beyond regular maintenance. And then also, should the council select to reduce or eliminate some of the paid parking in certain times, we would want to bring back something to fill the gap on any potential revenues that would be lost, that would likely come in the form of increased parking rates. But before we get into that, you know, he wanted to allot any time to ask questions and not make too many assumptions about the direction that you're running.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that are here that we should speak on this topic? Let's go on a chat one more time, are there any members here in this room that we should speak on this topic? Okay. So, with that, we will now bring it to questions, or did you want? Did you want anybody else to speak, add anything, or just wait for the questions? This is more economical at this time.
Yeah, we have asked our partners from LAS and T2 leader tonight, if they're available for questions.
Thank you. Okay. On the economics, maybe that is a good place to start, because speaking through that minutia of it, which is sometimes, we'll go on back and forth. Questions on the economics portion? Our chairman, if you want, it's Eric.
So, I don't, if that's, okay, on the economic sheet, please. Yes, thank you, I know this is very important for a member of our residents, business owners. And in fact, I'd speak personally as a council member, so, you know, we always get to play, and that's why we're here, to figure out how to make changes. On the presentation of the data, previously we related to see monthly time trend. So, I would like to see that, so that we only have a few data points here, from April to March, and then, previously we had more graphs that showed the trends that were occurring, so at some point, I would like to be able to see that. One other thing that I thought the council did ask within the items to be reviewed was a additional mobile pay option. We were looking at transaction costs, and you know, maybe there's another way, because there were associated fees with that, and are we tied into only one mobile pay? Because we're using a, it's not really an app, but it's a website process, and so, if that, if that's been done, or it has been done, you might know that. Those were two questions, Mr. Mayor, about the presentation.
Thank you.
So, with regard to the mobile app, I know I can answer two of those questions, that we determined that the Apple Pay and Google Pay, those types of things, work with the machines. And you may or may not recall that we did add QR codes, which are now on the machines that people can use. I would ask our colleagues from T2, maybe to come out and talk a little bit about whether or not a separate mobile app is available since the last time you talked about mobile apps.
Yeah, certainly. And had you come up, if you could just introduce yourself, I'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Joe Wyler, and I'm with T2 Systems, and I lead our municipal sales team. So, the current mobile pay is.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, if we did the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They can't turn.
We need a microphone. We need three more inches.
Or somebody might have.
Is this?
Oh.
Is this better?
It's a little bit better, but.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So, the current mobile pay app that you're using is provided by T2 Systems. Our kiosk software also integrates with a variety of other mobile pay apps. So, we integrate with 10 to 15 of the common mobile pay apps that are out there. And so, definitely from kind of a solution perspective, there would be other options that could also be deployed, if that was the style.
So, one of the, one of the problems, I think, that we encountered earlier, as we were learning more about this system as it was going forward, was the cost for each transaction. And so, that then started impacting the fee that we could charge for the hourly, which is my understanding, why we have two-hour minimums in a parking lot, which is upsetting to a number of people, because, hey, I am going to need 10, 15 minutes, but you're making me pay for two hours, and the understanding that I had, and I think that was going to the council, was it was primarily because of the transaction cost that we need to be able to recover it. And then, in the council meeting, I believe, when our former chief was still here, there was additional information that was shared, like cash transactions have the least amount of transactional cost, which then, the council said, well, then. which then the council said, well, then perhaps why can't we have in the law a 50 cent option? And the idea also would be if you decide to use a credit card, then the user would be able to accomplish possibly. So it's kind of, and that's not, you weren't here for that, but that was one of the questions about how we could find ways to provide a larger cost recovery percentage that we're not paying into the credit card or mobile app providers, which then is a savings that we have for our community in allowing them to feel better about their purchase of a shorter interval time when they only need 20 minutes per second. So it's good to hear that, that ability of different mobile options, pay options are on your machine. However, it's the transaction cost that seems to be driving how we get to decide to set our rates. And if there was a way that we could lower those and find the best one that has lowest, then we would prefer to have that so we can pass along that those things to our merchants and business. This is kind of that.
Right, I understand.
Got it.
Staff, anything, Dan?
Fairly follow-up again, please. So I have a follow-up just regarding the, the mobile app. And as we said, though, with our current mobile solution, I'm not going to get into the intervals and all that kind of stuff. I'm just talking about just the ability to pay from your phone and not, and not the kiosk. The, the issue at the end in that area is that starting the transaction is, there's a barrier there. You have to either scan the QR code, make sure you got it, follow it, it goes into your, it goes into the browser on your phone. And then that brings you to the, that brings you to the screen where you can then, where you can then start. Or you can text, text the code. That whole, that whole process, and I ended up putting a shortcut into my, into my iPhone that I, I did, and it starts, it starts a text to that number and types in the SMB part. So I just need to know whether I can type A V E or zero, whatever, whatever bottom in. But that's too much. It's way too much. If you have a, if you have a dedicated app on your smartphone, open up the app and now you're already there. Or you should have location services. It knows where, but it knows kind of where you are. And maybe you might have, you're on the street versus like you're, you're in a lot. It's not sure where you are based on location. Is that how these other apps that we're talking about that potentially have been old to us, is that how those work?
So different apps have different characteristics. The, the T2 app, as you described, does not require you to download an app on your iPhone. There are others that do ask for that, and some of those you can do anonymously, some you can, can sign up. So there are definitely different options in terms of what that user experiences.
So if we, we had an option where it was an app, is that there's some of those folks who have a fairly dumber phone, looking for tech. Is that where you can do that for the manual too?
That we, we can integrate multiple mobile payment apps within the kiosk application.
Because that was, and forgive me, I, I, my memory is faulty, but I thought that looking at the, that the mobile option was one of the items. I'm not seeing it on the list of seven. It's been my last time. It's something, right? Going crazy.
Superman.
Yeah, I don't think it was one of the items we were looking at. I think one of the, one of the questions had to do with looking at something like Park Mobile, which is really common in a lot of cities. And we did, we, we have reached out to Park Mobile, but that would require a complete replacement of the kiosk system in T2.
Okay. All right, I, I, I don't know what kind of those presentation questions, I have plenty of questions for T2 that I wanted to also have taken over.
Right, as far as the financials, I think we're not going to be able to dispute those because we didn't run it. But to Vice Nurse's point about, I think it was trying to, trying to find the most simplistic, user-friendly, but also that didn't have a cost, even if you pay your property tax and you want to do a credit card, they charge you, right? So it's, it's a pass through. And with some of our services now in the city, it's also that because it comes to a large sum. But that was my recommendation too, is that because of the service charge that it had, then we have to keep it in a certain threshold respect. Okay.
Right, right. And so what I believe I heard from that last time was, yeah, you can pay cash. And by paying cash, it could be the same rents in the parking lots. Let's say you only wanted one hour in a parking lot. You didn't want two hours. You wanted to pay 50 cents instead of paying an hour, a dollar for two. It's the same transaction cost. So if we're able to pay cash and, and there's no additional fee with that, then why wouldn't we be able to quickly program it to, for the kiosk to be able to accept that 50 cents for the hour in the parking lots? And for all, and in fact, we're actually saving money because some people can pay it for a dollar with their credit card. So is that still possible that we could enter? And this is, this is the part that gets really frustrating when we were sold this is, we were told, hey, this system is so amazing that we can quickly change the rates and zip, it would be done. And that's one of the reasons why I voted to entrust that to go ahead and be able to do it because then it wouldn't have to go back to council. So if we have an answer that to the back parking lots, be for a cash transaction, you put in 50 cents and you get an hour.
So technically you could change the rates and I think another part of, of whether it's that, whether it's removing eight to 10 Sundays. When you start making real micro changes, at that point, I'm probably going to recommend to you that you bring back a parking consultant because all of those numbers really need to be recast in terms of the system was designed so that it could pay off a general loan over four years. And any one of these changes, and they're completely within your purview. They're completely policy driven. I think where it becomes troubling is that it doesn't sound like a lot to do just a tiny change like that. And it's certainly easier to program it. It changes the trajectory of the program and the council might be fine with that. But the one thing that we did determine as well internally is that there was a parking consultant, a traffic consultant, who did your whole study and based the rates on certain assumptions. And if we change multiple assumptions, then I think finance would probably feel more comfortable that we at least see what that looks like. So you could change, let's say, I'm just making this up, you could change the 50 cent for one hour in the lot. Does that have a cascading effect that the two hours then has to go up to three dollars instead of two dollars, something like that? I don't know. Those are, there's a benchmarking and assumptions that are put into all of that.
Cost recovery.
So I just can't tell you today what that would change in terms of your revenue stream. But yes, it is physically possible for us to change the rates of the parking in the kiosk. As they say, it just takes three bucks.
Understood, Mr. President, seeing all the brother honesty. Because we're talking about these little changes, but overall, big changes are needed. That's why I feel this program was originally set up to obtain two plus million dollars a year, or we're at a quarter of that. And in the presentation, it said at a quarter of that, it should still be satisfactory. My feeling is that there's so many things that need to be adjusted, and it's not just the revenue side, it's the expenditure side. And I've been asking, if you were here, but previously, when we had the last contract, so they're paying, we're paying for the downtown and we're paying for other services, but they're all on one contract and they're all coming out of the department fund, which never, I never liked. So of course, I think there needs to be a lot of work on this and getting to the right solution. We've been dealing with this for over a year. And it, it really necessitates looking at the whole program. And I know we're dealing with these seven, eight things now, but based on what I've already seen and heard so far, it's time to, to really do a full reset. And if we need to bring the department consultant in, you know, that may be something that we can talk about later. But this is exactly why I wanted the subcommittee to dive into these questions because here we are, two months later, in the same boat. And now we're being told you need to hire another person to manage the fragile product that we have for all the reasons. I mean, it's in the staff report, we're not aligned, right? Re-leveling, does that mean balancing that? Okay, so they weren't installed properly, like, so, yeah, this, this is a big mess. And I haven't, this is the worst project that I've been, since I've been on council. And the majority of our staff weren't involved in making those decisions, but we're setting up a period council. We need to deal with it. And, and, you know, this is not going to solve what we're talking about today. So I apologize for going too far off, Mr. Mayor. It's like, as I'm hearing more about these different changes and what we need to do, it's like, we need to get a subcommittee together and dive into this and talk to the consultant to get forward so that we're further along. Because I feel today I have more questions on uncertainties in this program than I did at the last meeting.
So, Councilmember Alvarez.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. So I'm trying to understand, we cannot program the kiosk to accept cash because initially it was correlated by the parking plate reader. So if we change the indexing to just the numerical space, then would, is there a possibility of accepting cash just because I guess the indexing needs to be changed or reprogrammed?
So the, the version of the kiosk that was purchased and deployed does not take bills or notes. It takes coin as the only cash input to that machine. So there, there's a different version of kiosks that takes notes and can take coin as well. But this particular version is coin only.
So it has nothing to do with the, the, it's an enforcing the license plate. It's the type of, of, yeah, payment that it purchase.
Correct.
Regardless, we cannot accept cash because of the machine.
It accepts coin. It does not accept bills or notes.
But is there, is there a way that we can change the license plate to a parking number? Like, for example, we can pay the curb to numerical space and change the, the indexing of that kiosk to just numerical, simple, numerical without letters. That would be a step for our merchant to use the other e-dos.
Yeah, I mentioned that in T2 Systems as well. Sorry, leaning over so you can hear me. Yes, that's an option. That's pay by space that is, that's our pay stations are able to do. So if you would like to do that as an alternative, you can absolutely offer that.
Just a clarification for Councilmember Alvarez. That would change enforcement from the ALPR machines, which are very, very efficient, back to what we had back in the day, I'll say, which was where they went down and they checked the kiosk for its expiration date and didn't do it off of the license plate reader because we then wouldn't be entering. So it's a completely different model of enforcement. It would again be bringing back instead of LaaS and their ALPR readers, someone who would just walk from kiosk to kiosk and do it in that way. So be very, it would take us back to an inefficient time. Perhaps if there's an interest in that, it may be more to look at. Is there an app that's consistent with entering in a way that they can remember and pre-enter their license plate if that was your interest?
So we have, so I, so if T2 can reprogram the kiosk so a much simpler application, less than, how, how do you know, how do you read the, or how do you enforce the ticketing by using the license plate number as opposed to a simple space number?
Yeah, I'll turn over to LaaS and apply this on enforcement experience of pay by space.
Hi, good afternoon, Steve Moon, LaaS Parking. So if, if we were to make a change to the way that we're accepting payments at kiosks, as the chief mentioned, and we converted to pay by space or each curb was labeled with a space number, our LPR wouldn't, oh, sorry, our enforcement team wouldn't be as efficient. So currently we're enforcing parking spaces by reading the license plates with our mobile cameras, our mobile ALPR, which then sends a code or an error to our enforcement agent's device and then they either write a citation or warning or they move on. As Chief said, this would kind of take us back to, to where we were enforcing previously while we're walking to each kiosk or seeing if the vehicle was paid by the space or reading a receipt that took place on the dashboard and then creating an action after that, whether that's writing a citation or a warning or continuing to move on.
And, and if you could imagine, then the meter reader going back to the kiosk each time they were to write a ticket, it really is a reason why they call it back in the old days when they did that. There's just the lack of efficiency and the amount of person power needed for that would be pretty significant.
Then I guess that's the problem that was turned over to our merchant because they go to the kiosk, they plug in, it takes time to, to input their license plate because LaaS cannot read. Instead of them walking to the kiosk and looking at the, the state or, or the license plate, it takes time for the, you know, the, the parker to input. They easily can just scan the license plate and then write a ticket so easily while they're inputting their, their information of the kiosk because they don't read as fast as or they should be. I, I, I think that's the problem there.
I'm sorry, is your interest in doing pay by space for the merchant so they don't have to remember their license plate? Is that, or enter their license plate?
Yeah, I think somehow.
So they just have to enter the space, but not their license plate? I mean, they're going to have to remember one thing or another and.
Yeah, I think somehow how do they scan the license plate or just plug in the license plate? I don't know how LaaS get the information that, that a specific car hasn't paid the kiosk yet, yet because LaaS can easily see, instead of walking to the kiosk and, and check this particular license plate has paid, you see the, the car, car and say, well, I'm still in the process. And then here you are plugging in the license plate without checking the kiosk. This is more convenient for LaaS to issue a ticket because it's, that's how you program it in your, your machine. You're just easily checking the license plate as opposed to walking to the kiosk, right?
I don't think that.
I'm not exactly sure I follow. I, I think the, the way that we're enforcing now, we feel is more efficient to capture the vehicles that, that are paid or not paid. With, we're using kind of global automated license plate recognition technology to check if vehicles are paid. You know, if we were to go to a pay by split, pay by a space model, it would take us longer to enforce. We might need more officers to enforce. But I do see your point. I, I think your point is centered around the, the local downtown business and residents having to remember their license plates put into the kiosk to pay, right?
Yes.
Bill, Councilmember, if I may, I think it also is, so you are, you go to the kiosk and you're starting the process. You go to the kiosk and you're starting the process. And then Laz comes by and says they haven't paid. And so the limitation of time. Is I think what the council member is saying is that those are some of the complaints or challenges that we've heard from folks like, hey, I had just parked. I I just had to find chaos A, but that wasn't working, so I went to B. And then by the time I paid whatever, I received a ticket, I think that's what the council member is saying as far as um. That both of the elongated system maybe has a little bit of another assurance by no the efficiency, but I think that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, correct, more clarity on that. With that, clarify my question. What we're seeing now, we're seeing that more in the kiosk or more malfunction and more kiosk running offline. And we're not seeing those level of complaints anymore um. On that quick time differential between the scan and the person having the ability to enter. Into database, database to report to the L P R system to be able to say there's a valid permit or not and then issue a ticket. Like I said, we were seeing that early on in the process, we're always most of the time dismissing those citations. Uh, basically like those time differences comparing them, um, we're not seeing that as much now as we currently sit. Based on the fact that the kiosk is more operational and Laz's enforcement posture has been slightly less than I'll say in the area. Yeah, and then one of the things Laz does do now is they're taking photos of the vehicles as our partners that process takes. The the enforcement officer with their uh, ticket writer device taking a photo, so there's a little bit more of a time. Uh, that transpires for instant citation and the Laz also moving on to the next, the next vehicle, so. I don't see, I don't think we're seeing that anymore. If we're still hearing that from the the merchants downtown, we'll have to try to see if we can address that. But again, we're not hearing it, we're not seeing it on the uh, the complaint side and appeal side that we get uh, all the time.
I I do want to mention also, we do have our Sergeant Scott Smith Batongo here. Uh, he is our one stop shop really for appeals. He does get a significant number of appeals and generally is a a very understanding and there are ways to see. If in fact they've entered payment, I'm sure that would be one that would be dismissed if there was just a lag of time before they entered the payment. So we do have that human element that and he is very, very and has mostly dismissed an awful lot of the tickets, understanding that. There has been frustration downtown and we have had kiosks being erratic and we really think this last three weeks with. T two on the ground on an every day, every week with us. Has really been beneficial in terms of really getting a a reset, the jury's still out, right? How long will that last, how long will we have them up and going because we've had some fits and starts? But we have some really good reason to believe that with T two working with us right now. That we have, we have solved a lot of those problems and we are seeing the amount of turnover and really. When I read back to Chief Johansson's report, the reason why we did this at the beginning was. That merchants were frustrated and others because we weren't seeing the turnover enough. To be able to get people to understand that they have a parking place when they get to downtown. There have been a lot of complaints, I have walked the avenue quite a bit and I I will say to you that. To a person we have recognized and our merchants have recognized that the turnover piece of it is working. Now let's get all those meters working so that we can actually have a system that at least is frustration free. Uh, around the rates and the other financial pieces, I understand we're gonna be, you know, looking at that, working on that, but. To a large extent, the turnover is working, we've got eighty percent utilization. And I think that we have the kiosks working, we'll take another piece of that frustration now.
So um, regarding the question about using uh, pay by space, I think I think that fundamental, it it. I think there's a really fundamental change to the way the whole program works and not only all the all everything that we already talked about. But the um. The fact that if someone pulls in and parks, they pay for an hour, they stay for forty five minutes and drive away. The next, the next person can pull it in and park and perhaps not pay. But our system wouldn't know that, we have nothing tying the car. It stays. And I think that fundamentally, so that the the, I think there's a fundamental difference there. Um. But there's a way, there's way in more places that we that that we that we that we focus and that whole difficulty of of the um. Uh, some people have difficulty remembering parts, uh, the license number and all that kind of stuff. It's another reason why I really want to go for having a the head of that because. If you're a weekly customer going going downtown on a regular basis, you load your license plate and the app is in there and now you don't even necessarily remember it because it's right there. Um, so that 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 is another piece of that. Um, I want to go back to what um, Councilmember Medina was uh, talking about earlier regarding. Um, looking at the 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 system as a whole, looking at looking at costs, not just revenue but at cost. Um, question that I think I know the answer to is, you know, in the recommendation was was to approve. Um. Funding for a a contracted master technician position. And kiosk reinstillations, I would imagine that the kiosk reinstillations is a one time charge, but that master technician position, it would be an annual charge. And is the intention that 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 would be funded by the department or? It's a big answer, yes, I just wanted to confirm that, so the the next thing I want to. I say is wrong, which is. The whole idea that if we start meddling with the the times and all that, we're gonna fundamentally change the program. That horse left the barn and set the barn on fire when it left. That that horse has died of the barn, there's no way, especially we're we're adding this, we're gonna be adding this amount of money on top of it and. I agree with Councilmember Medina that right now, the. The the meters and who we have paid, the paid parking is on the hook for funding enforcement. Not just downtown, but citywide. And not being able to tell how much of the effort is being spent downtown versus citywide. Really makes it super difficult to figure out this program, this works or not. I don't. I don't know if when when our former chief was adding all the numbers and and not know Medina is right, then there was a problem from very, very rosy and they um. Uh, and I I do remember that even if, you know, even if you were one, we only bring in a quarter and what we expect. We're still gonna make that pay. I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna, we're close to that. I don't, so. So I I do think we have to to um, think more fundamentally about it. Um. Going back to the um. The, I don't want to spend too much time on the free on holidays thing, that's, of all the problems, that's the smallest. Um. But the. I I'm glad to know that there might be a solution for it, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of having staff on every holiday, having to go reprogram everything one by one. And then on the next day have to go in and erase them one by one, that's ridiculous, we'd never be in favor of that. But I can't believe that. Anybody uses this, any other municipality who uses this particular um, machine. There's not anybody on earth who wouldn't be absolutely frustrated by putting in your license plate, you know, getting a message. Here's parking, this is how much it is, here are all the different rates, put in your parking. Which, you know, how long do you want to stay, I want to stay this long, oh, by the way. I mean, that, I I I'd like to hear from from T two, is this how it works for other municipalities who have these machines? There has to be other municipalities that have these machines, because that's not the case. Go somewhere else. With my question.
Um, yes, hi, uh. That is how it would work for any municipality that would that would uh, offer that, for sure.
Are there other municipalities who have these machines?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. For that, but. That's, so if if there's a, there's a solution for that beyond stickers, I mean, uh. I I'm not on pace, right, that that having to go through all the steps and then they say, oh, by the way, it's free. That's really annoying, but in on the, to folks who are already really annoyed.
Yes, I I agree, um, and the the workaround to that would be to change the inter the introductory screen, which is the first screen you see before you go through any other sequence of screens. Um, that that does require some some that can be programming to do, um, which it does not require. Uh, going to each meter with a U S B key and then having to program it, you can do it over the air remotely, uh, but to. It it does require some work to that on the forefront to do that and that bit. But so I I I therefore would be in favor of this.
For someone who's not as a tech savvy as yourself, can you tell me, you're saying it takes so much time on the front end or the back end? What does that mean, what does that mean in time, days, cost, et cetera?
It 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 depends on the uh, familiarity of the system of the of the person do that doing the work. Um, I can do rather quickly, uh, but time, yes.
Take you down there now.
Takes easier for me.
You take it down to San Mateo Avenue.
I I'm happy to show anything, I'll tell you, yes, of course. Um, so, so the amount of time it takes is variable, um, and it's uh. You know, you you could even set up the whole year in advance so that it automatically happen as time goes on, as as the year advances. Um, of course, to to do that though would require some. It's just hard to answer how much time it takes, it it depends on, I I guess, the familiarity of the operator or the software.
If if I could translate her a moment, uh, I think for um, for the mothership back at T two and. Uh, they they actually can work, it sounds like, to try and do this workaround. For the initial screen. On our end with our system, it's called Iris, I think it's a significant amount of work. But if we can find someone, and again, maybe paying them to do that, in fact. We asked T two, could we pay you to come and work the backend of our system and do that? We just don't know the cost or what time it will be, but that is what I mentioned earlier about proof of concept. We're going to try it out um, and see if we can get that working and if we do. And then it's a matter of fiscal, you know, impact with just the money it'll take each year to do it, but. Sounds like a a a couple of days on our end of programming in the Iris system.
Oh, no, 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 so um. Another area, and I did send a question about this and unfortunately the answer was no, but. I really, really wanted, I thought I was super clear in our meeting in early January to be able to see. Even if it's an estimate, even if it's directionally correct, but not perfectly, not perfectly adequate because we have so many broken meters. To be able to derive our parking occupancy at various time periods that we're talking about perhaps um, eliminating. Uh. Uh, paid parking enforcement, because that's what the key is, it's not about. It's not about, I mean, the 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 answer that I got to my question, people went right back to the to the whole to to just talk to me about. The revenue, thought about, well, if you eliminate parking from eight to ten, this is how much revenue we're gonna lose. It's about, is paid parking program from eight to ten achieving the goal of the program? Which is to have eighty five percent occupancy. And if our occupancy from that time is twenty percent, the answer is no. And then and and what that means is that, yes, we are getting some revenue there. But we're, it's the 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 paid parking is not needed there for any other purpose than to raise revenue. And I did not vote for this, you know, this program to raise revenue. I voted for this program to bring turnover. Onto our avenue, which was desperately needed, that was the, that was the whole point. If there was gonna be revenue, if we're gonna make make money as a as a result, great, okay, great. But the the primary goal is the turnover. And so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the the table and I do appreciate the the, you know, how much we're getting by at the meters and at the citations. And if I had gotten these numbers before, you know, a couple of hours ago, I might have actually been able to just sit down on the Excel and write a model. To figure out, well, okay, we're gonna have this much from meter, um, and, you know, assuming that people are paying this much or whatever, I. I could probably try to figure out some kind of percentage, but I don't think it's time to do it, and here we are. I mean, same thing for the citations, because it's a combination of people who pay and people who didn't to go to you. And the the those two together are that that there was a car on the end. So. That's, I'm I'm really frustrated by it, by by that, because it's a key piece of information. That we need, I know in my heart that we shouldn't be doing worse than we're doing today. I know that because I'm down there all the time. And it's, it's, it seems punitive. To folks who just want to go down there and, you know, pick up a cup of coffee or go out and grab a sandwich or whatever early in the morning, but it's not so busy. Um, to have, you know, half the block empty and I'm, you know, I'm maybe one of the only cars there and having to pay. Um, so. But I don't have the numbers behind me to convince my colleagues that we get two more votes for that. Because it wasn't provided.
Maybe I can answer that, so I think you can see even from the revenue collection. That eight to ten is less busy time. And even as as you think about utilization of leftover waste during the day, so it does inform what I think you're trying to.
A little bit, and I'm absolutely gonna be trying to convince my colleagues of that, I still have, that that is the United up on it, but.
And and I can tell that everyone on council is frustrated about this and um, as someone who went back and watched the different. Um, meetings, I can tell you that one thing I've observed. Is that we we do have a tendency to talk about a lot of different subjects and I think everybody thinks that they were heard. The way that the staff hears everything is uh, three people. That somebody voted and said, I'm interested in this coming back, so one thing that I want to address is that. The seven things from the seven things you agreed on were things that you wanted more information on. It doesn't mean you can't ask questions about other things, but I would suggest that if we take these in the order. We might actually make some progress on some of the changes that we want to see. And then if there are additional things that we can bring back. We can, because I know that um. The chief on his way out, I think there was a level of frustration there too, that he had been asked and answered. Some of these questions multiple times and didn't hear the momentum of three people saying. Hey, Steph, we don't care if you are concerned about losing the revenue from eight to ten. We're gonna make a motion, we're gonna eliminate enforcement from eight to ten. That is completely within our purview to do, and I think we just need to get there on on some of these. So I guess I would say, we we had some of those charts. And we decided not to include them because. It's a lot of putting those uh, putting those things together and does it make it, does give you enough information? To make an informed choice? Or do you have the information and you just have to make a choice? Right? So I think there's that, I think the secondary thing is that there are some components with regard to the system as it was set up that are limiting. That we didn't realize were limited until after the program had been with us and we installed P S and et cetera. And it's, it is frustrating for the staff, it's frustrating for. Parking officers who get complaints, I will say that the level of complaints that people are receiving out. In the field are pretty bit less, I mean, you have three hundred and fifty thousand transactions, people have figured out how to use it. Um, but if the council wishes to provide relief. To early morning businesses when it's not that, when it's not that busy. Um, we can certainly do that tonight. Um. If you don't want to charge for parking on Sundays, you can certainly do that tonight. Um, I think that there is enough information to make some of those, I think we were thinking that we gave you so much information, it was almost overwhelming. I think the last slide had like sixty some slides and we're, we're trying to break this down into some bite sized pieces that we can make some meaningful changes.
Could could I add one thing in as well? When I looked at one of the original reports, actually from the parking consultant, one of the reasons for Sunday. Because many of the other agencies around us don't do Sundays, was the the clear voice of the residents. And the merchants, because you have a church right there that uses quite a bit of that parking and if you don't do a Sunday enforcement. Then you have residents parking starting Saturday evening at eight and they go till Monday morning and and there's. Not a lot of turnover and then you have the church individuals and so I think it's a bit of a perfect storm for us. On San Mateo Avenue with Sunday parking, which by the way, Saturday and Sunday, talk about variability. When we looked at that original parking consultant, said Saturday and Sunday are huge utilizers of the avenue. So you just, you know, the realization, I I'll be very honest with you, I believe when we put that little asterisk around how much revenue we're now generating. We believe that now that all of these kiosks are functioning, it could well be a third to to a half more. Over the next year, now you're right, Councilmember Hamilton, if your premise is that it's a sanction. When we enforce at eight to ten, we were coming at this from a different construct, I think. And that's not to say that at some point you don't say that construct has changed, but it was an enterprise fund, which means that. which means that we were going to, over time, you know, eight to ten is very low, we actually had Sergeant Smith-Matungle go out and do physical counts, because that's the only way you can really reliably get utilization, and it matched almost exactly the counts you got from Ryan Johansson, uh, in November and January. And what was interesting about that is there is a dip, eight to ten. It really peaks until two, goes down two to four, and really goes up from, uh, four to eight. I mean, incredibly high usage right there. Good for San Mateo Avenue, right? It's great to see. So, but the question is, what are you going to do about that? Are you going to sort of micromanage, and that's not a negative, it's just, you know, are you going to get that granular with a period of time? And go away from the construct that the variability covers the way in which the consultants constructed how to recover the costs for the payment of the program? So I think that's a fundamental shift if you're going to do that, and yes, you're exactly right, Councilmember Hamilton, the fact that we need a master or a meter technician of that high level has really put a kink in the works, but frankly, we've been assured, and we've been meeting with Laz and T two and pulling our hair out, but we've been assured that if we don't have that, it's going to be a couple of our F T Es dealing with it on a daily basis, because that is, you know, San Mateo, I think we said San Mateo has two full-time meter technicians, Lendale, for a quite a bit more meters, but may have Pam share that. We were pretty surprised at the amount of technical, complex resource, and, you know, um, capability is needed on a daily basis out there.
And, and I appreciate that, that answer to my, the question that I had sent in advance, it's like, if I was, I was just as surprised because you could see that talk. And, but again, it, 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 it informs our frustration, because that was never even
Right.
that was never even part of the hack, this was important part of the program.
That's right.
So it's another, another
Yep.
thing for, to, to try to, 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 to fix, and, 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 I mean, I'll, 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 I'll be honest, the pipe of us hung out to dry on most of this stuff, because what was, what was on the list for the works like this, and this happens, we changed, we changed the screen, we did all these things, and, and the, the numbers and all that, very little of it is turning out to be true. The one thing that's turning out to be true, which is the good news, is that we're achieving the eighty percent, um, the eighty-five percent, uh, target, where I think the, the number that I got when I asked for the percentages broken down was minus one big number, which was eight.
Yeah.
Which is pretty, pretty ungood. So, as far as the overall, the overall goal of the program. You brought up Sundays, and brought up this, um, uh, the, the, the four to eight, which, which, um, for the purpose of our discussion, it's really six to eight. Having those percentages, having, knowing what the inventory is, informs those decisions too, because that honestly, that's the only thing that I'm using to inform my decisions, is the program working, or is it not? And I think making, I still believe that making six to eight free, sure, it'd be nice, but I think we're shooting ourselves in the
Yes.
because that's the busiest time, why wouldn't we do that? And it's not about, oh, look at all that nice money we can make between six and eight. It is, let's not have the avenue fill up with cars from the neighborhood, so now people can't go and spend money, and, and spend money at our downtown house, what they're doing now, and they're, and because it's so full, and, and it's so busy, clearly, they're not, they're okay with paying for parking, because then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be there, and we wouldn't have a problem. So, and then the same thing is for Sunday. I really would have loved to see what that number is for Sunday, because everything, everything that we heard told us that Sunday was one of the biggest, biggest, busiest days. And are we going to just allow everything to fill up with parking? With, with, with parking in there, but on the busiest days, the people who want to come down and park have nowhere to go. But I'll tell you, I got barbecue, barbecue in public for voting no on Sunday. Because it's all just about, oh, there's some nice food. And Tom is on the line. But it's, that, that's what's been so frustrating about all this. I'm sorry, it sounds so frustrating, but I'm.
And, you know, one thing I would add too, because I don't want to make it sound like the staff is just like, ooh, we're making money. Um,
And that wasn't my implication.
No, I understand. I, we, we borrowed money from the general fund. And so, you know, we're very cognizant that by borrowing money from the general fund, it means there's other things that you guys want to do that we can't do. So we've been very focused on how is it over four years that we're going to pay that back? And one option could be, if you make some changes, that we have to tell our admin services director that we're going to pay the general fund tax over six years instead of four years, or something like that. Again, I think there are solutions to a lot of these frustrations, and the job that you do is way harder than the job that we do, because you're always hearing advice, and if there's something that you feel like, hey, we know that this is going to change some of the fundamentals, it, it's still possible to do some of those things, we just need to re-engineer it again.
And, and I do want to, just to a, answer your last part of that question, we are so well aware that you all and our credibility in the downtown with these meters, and that is something that we've, we've really hit hard on T two about, because it's not T two or anybody else, it's, at the end of the day, it's our city's credibility and legitimacy downtown. And, and we have, and Juan is here, I want to recognize Juan and Sergeant Smith-Matungle, he has become our meter technologist as a C S O, and spends ten to twelve hours, and comes in sometimes at four in the morning to reprogram these meters, and so I just want to assure you that we've been working really hard and are pretty excited. And, and I don't want to, you know, I don't, I don't want the next chief to be back here in a couple of months and saying, well, that Manheimer, she told you this, but T two has been on the ground with us for the last three weeks, and we have a really pretty good feeling for the first time in a long time that we're going to take care of some of the absolute frustration, and I think it was you, ma'am, who said last time, I just want the meters to work. They just have to work. I mean, bottom line, they have to work, and we have to get them working. We've been working very hard, I want to assure you of that. We have been working very hard, our staff and, and T two and Laz and everybody else on that.
And I, I want to be, be clear that my frustration is that, in no way is because I don't think staff is working hard on this. I know that, I mean, this is, the, the, it's a big mess, and there's a lot of things to fix, and we, we see them out there, we see, we see, we see Juan out there, we know that the city is spending a lot of time, um, uh, uh, pardoning tickets and, 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 and all those, all those types of things, but, um, I do appreciate you, um, acknowledging that, how, how, being the public base of, of this, how, how difficult it is, and, and, you know, I mentioned earlier that I I'm getting barbecued about, about Sundays. There's seven things on this list, I think, I really do think it was eight, because we, I'm pretty sure that, that we voted on, can we look at better, better mobile options? Pretty sure we voted, but, but neither here nor there. But there were thirteen things on the list, and I voted yes on twelve, though.
Hmm.
Oh, I just, um, have to say that.
Did you have a question about the Sunday numbers, because I can.
Yeah, if you have, if you have Sunday, if you have Sunday inventory numbers, I'd love to hear them.
So, um, somebody can help me share my screen again, would be great. So, and this, this was a really hard, um, we have this, so the Sunday numbers are included already from eight to eight. But we pulled them off for this one. So, for Sunday, the entire day, we received eighty-seven thousand, a little over eighty-seven thousand in new revenue. And about almost a hundred thousand in segmentation revenue. So in terms of the, the busy day, that figures in comparison to the time periods, if you look at it. I suppose what we could do is we could give you every day of the week. I don't know if that actually would inform the direction that you want to go, if it's, uh, we pulled out Sunday because it, it was something that the council specifically wanted, that information. And then we just added the other information for the rest of the entire week, but the eight to ten AM, um, is the hundred and thirty-three thousand, but you look at the six to eight, I think it's fifty-three things that you are considering. Of the three, the Sunday is the biggest loss. And the eight to ten AM is the smallest loss.
I'm doing some great math. So, assuming.
And, and keep in mind just the asterisk that we do think that that's not going to be the revenue going forward once the kiosk is working, but it is relative.
Because we can, we can kind of derive how much of the totals coming from Sunday is based on these numbers, I just don't have the time, so maybe, maybe if you go to other questions while I break out the, break out my spreadsheet and do some modeling here, because it's seeming that Sunday is absolutely a larger share than one Saturday. Yeah, you know, Saturday and Sunday are big days. Compared to Saturday. Yeah, exactly.
So it's more of a policy, policy issue than I.
Exact numbers.
And, and again, for, for me, just to be super clear for everybody listening, it's about, you know, are we achieving the goal?
Yeah.
If, if we were, you know, I would also have to be charging Sunday this whole year, and it's been, you know, thirty percent utilized because people are getting driven away, then that would tell us something. There's, there's not, I don't know. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Samira. Yeah, I did have a few questions, uh, to Laz, but I want to stay on this, um, conversation. Um, when I did my walk to the downtown area, um, we have approximately a little over one hundred businesses down here on Avenue. Um, we have ten of them that, um, opens from as early as six to Starbucks, and, you know, um, proper shops, and correct me if I, if I'm wrong, as I recall, Chief Ryan said, and, and T two is here, um, that we cannot generate a report on a monthly basis. We have to, we had to wait six months to get all these figures. But wouldn't it be helpful to get a report from T two on a weekly basis or, or, um, a, a monthly basis? To see how much we generate, because we only have ten businesses that opens from, you know, as early as six to seven. Twenty-five restaurants that are average, uh, opens at eleven AM. Stores that maybe open from eight to ten. And, and I'm, I'm curious how we generate this much revenue from, from eight to ten. But we don't see the report from the kiosk. If there are, are, are actual reports that we generate would be six to seven. So how do we get the, the, the accurate data from when the business opened from six to eight, because we're trying to six to eight or six to seven from as little as ten businesses who opens that much? I know we have a lot of, of, uh, uh, enforcement tickets, but those are the parts from the residents with the businesses are closed. So we get the revenue from the ticket, from not from the merchant who, 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 um, does all the business when they open, it's from the people who are on the San Mateo Avenue, from the residents. So I think it would be beneficial if we get, um, an actual report on a monthly basis, or as, as shorter as a week report, between those breakdowns of the time, and how much enforcement we pay less to, uh, uh, issue tickets between those time, from six to eight or, or eight to ten. And my, that leads me to my question to Laz. Um, maybe he can offer a solution, since, uh, T two said they can program for the space. And, and the old days, uh, you know, a partner will go to the kiosk, print the receipt, and leave it on the dashboard, so the enforcer can see that you paid the ticket between this, this, uh, time slot. How do you deliver the, the ticket to the car? Don't you put it on the visual, so you're basically walking the street and go to the sidewalk and see the space? And if, if you don't have the ticket on the dashboard, then you issue, you issue the ticket. Uh, wouldn't that be the same as what you do now, to be, because you're saying that it wouldn't be as efficient if we changed it to the space parking?
Hi, Councilmember Kathy Hamilton here with Laz. We can go that route, although the city is paying for the A L P R equipment. Um, the A L P R equipment can run hundreds of license plates in less than five minutes. In comparison to one parking enforcement officer who would be able to walk a lot for maybe thirty minutes and only cover twenty-five percent of that.
Uh, just a comment, I mean, moving towards A L P Rs and paid by place is the future, and it is the best practice. Um, because there is, is just the lack of efficiency of going back to a paper ticket that they would actually put on the, and then the, they actually have to come back and put that ticket on their windshield, and in many ways, I think that cat is just out of that bag. Uh, and I don't think we'd be going back to paper at this point. Thankfully, I think that the efficiencies that it's generated benefit everybody. Uh, the question about remembering your plate, we hear that loud and clear. Uh, I actually remind everyone, and allow me to do it, because the public's watching right now. Take a picture of your license plate and put it on your phone, so you have it with you when you enter it, because I forget it every time, but you know, we will look into mobile ops again, I believe, Councilmember Hamilton, that we didn't see any that had that kind of perk whiz type of, uh, integration. But T two is continually evolving, and we, we will be looking at that again. Thank you.
I, I know everyone, could I, could I just ask, you put that Sunday slide up there again, the numbers. You can see your, so, you can see that, that, I appreciate it, thank you.
So now we have to ask for, for technical assistance behind me. Oh, sorry, Sunday.
Yeah, that's, that's what, thank you. Councilmember Shalor. Thank you. So, a few things.
Thank you.
Um, I'll just start by just trying to level set a few things, so, um, I, I, I hear that the one thing that we should be focusing on is that eighty percent goal, and while I believe that the initial problem that we were trying to fix was achieving that number, I think we've gone far beyond having only one goal in this program, and when we start criticizing the program itself, I'll just remind, uh, the council that we saddled this program with a lot of other things that are also part of the program. Um, we decided that we would, uh, give away free passes, we decided we would set the rates at the absolute minimum that we could, and, um, you know, those things, um, impact the program. So, you know, before, uh, we go too sorry for ourselves for bearing the brunt of this, uh, I just wanted to remind us that we, uh, we do bear somewhat of responsibility for the current situation that we're in. Um, when, when we talk about, um, you know, what the goals are, really, it's, it's, it goes kind of beyond fixing the parking issue, because I, I think we all agree that we wanted this program to at least try and pay for itself, and not be a further burden on the general fund. Um, you know, we wanted to minimize the impact to the people that are parking, and also to the, uh, to the merchants. That's why we did the free passes, so. There's a lot of things going on here, and when we talk about unraveling sort of these things, um, I, I know it seems, um, like a no-brainer to just start pulling these levels, but we do have to understand that this is that there's a complicated mechanism involved here, and, but even when we talk about people not parking in the morning, that there's a whole other side of that, because if we didn't enforce, who would be parked there, and what would be the impact? So if all of a sudden it's, it's three in the morning, and residents come back and start taking up those spots, and now you want to get your Starbucks coffee, and those spots are all taken up, we're right back to the situation, so we don't see it. Because we, we've taken an action that would cause people to leave, but if we unraveled that, then what happens? We don't know that. And, and, but we do know that in the past, that was a problem. So nobody's parking there right now, because a lot of businesses are closed, but if we open them back up, what's going to happen? So, there, there, there is more just looking at, you know, what is happening right now. We also have to remember back to what the situation was prior to this taking action. But I've also heard a few things that I definitely agree with here. And, and I'm glad it was reemphasized that the reason we did this in the first place was because there was a problem with parking downtown. We spent a good bit of money on a consultant and the consultant said, if you want to fix the problem, this is how you do it. So what we have means. And then there comes everything else. A couple of things that I was a little disappointed with on this presentation and in terms of what were you requesting? And I think I've heard this from some of my colleagues as well. The, doing the, a better mobile solution, I, I think is absolutely paramount to making this successful. I was in San Mateo, my wife had a procedure at a medical center there in San Mateo. And while I was waiting for it to come out, I was wandering around looking at meters. And they have solar powered meters. They look very similar to ours. They use pay by phone. They use license plates. And as I was standing there watching people interact with the system, they see that people were coming up. They were having no problem. Their system was very responsive. The pay by phone, I, I've used that when I worked in Redwood City. I've used it in San Francisco. And like the councilmember Hamilton was saying, once you have that app, you don't have to remember it. The system's there and so many cities around here are using it and that it makes it very convenient. I, I really hope that by this presentation, we would have had a little bit more information on which programs are available and what that does to the cost. Because none of these things are free. I get that. But understanding what it would take to get us there, I think we've been hearing from the public that they want something that's a little more user friendly. It'll go a long way to help with this program. Get better adoption. And I think that's a lot of the complaints that we're hearing. I had a question about the fine, the, the revenue generated from infractions. And I was wondering, were those numbers, the citation numbers only for downtown or is that system wide?
Only downtown.
Absolutely downtown overtime parking stations.
So another thing that we, that we've heard about before was, I, I think there's a thought that if we reduce enforcement, means that we cut those hours of, of when the meters were operational, that there will be a savings in the amount of our expenses related to enforcement of that. And I was wondering to what extent that's the thing? Or if our contract really is fixed and not really dependent on when the meters are running or when, when you're enforcing for meters versus other things?
Mayor Medina, councilmembers, the current contract with Lass, I have your contract and it has a baseline level of service for 40 hours a week of enforcement, which is for parking enforcement officers working regular shifts.
Another question here is, I'm finding it so. We call up the county attorney or reading the four Lass officers that are contracted. Is that just for San Mateo Avenue or is that for the, or is that for the city of San Bruno, I A Street Sweeping or other elements?
Yeah, it is. It is. It's citywide.
I don't want to repeat a lot of those, that what was said where it's frustration or the process. I'm going to also say on the mobile app, I also do. So, and not saying that what makes me right, but just saying that I kind of recall that the, the cost element was a precursor to what we charged and the lot we didn't want to. So I think that's one thing. I do, we do have two recommendations that we have tonight. Has to do with the master technician position, which councilmember Hamilton asked the question and has ongoing expense. And then should the council select to give staff direction to eliminate any type of certain times or days? But then staff also is recommending rates by the amount that's recaptured. And I understand we've got a slide, so I don't need to see it. But I know when we talk about revenue, the first thing that I glance at is they say, okay, that's an example, the eight to 10: it's the, these many dollars during that period. Eight to 44 meter, 44,000, 971. And this is on the street. Citation 38,000, I'll just round it down. And the lot's 45,000 on the citations, 5,000. So but at the same time, I wonder if that's a fair, it is true revenue that comes in. We don't receive 100% of it, right? Because there's administrative costs and stuff. So is that, is that actually accurate? And again, if we have no citations, because obviously citations change later. I mean, Street Sweeping is an example of that. You know, it's required. And so I see that as a, a revenue, but I, I don't know that it should be a guaranteed revenue. Because if people stop doing that, then that changes it. And so I'm seeing more on the, the meters themselves, not on the citations person, just for me. Because the citation happens when you park by a hydrant, whether you're on a Street Sweeping day. But at the same time, it's not a guarantee of that revenue. So that was just one thing that, I don't, I don't think there's a question there. I think it is just a statement of that. Let me open it up. I don't want to, we've been here, we have representatives in case there are more questions to those folks or if you don't want, if you have an opportunity, you might have.
So were we going to get a presentation or some discussion on what the problems are and what the fixes are? And understanding what re-leveling is and, and that I thought perhaps, so I do have other questions, but I think if there are a lot of speaks about what they're kind of doing, then perhaps I could feel a little bit more comfortable with.
We were planning on separate presentations that are available for questions. So if you'd like to ask questions.
All right. How about this? Can you summarize the problems that we've been encountering? And what has been done in the past and things that you fixed in the stat report that said T2's been out the last two weeks, fixed a couple of problems and only local problems are bad? We had a presentation a while ago that said, hey, we think everything's cool. We're running at certain percentage. Haven't heard what the percentage is. Are we still? What, what is the percentage of time that our kiosks are operating? What are the major malfunction? So that we can be a little more aware of it. And it's, I'll leave it at that because the answers are going to get to a lot more questions.
Does it, does it give you enough information in the question to kind of start your project?
It does. And I, all that Andrew's that been, it's kind of been our outside resource as well. But I would say the focus over the last four weeks at a high level has been to evaluate issues that have been reported in the field and then do additional troubleshooting, including some component replacement. And so one of the, the issues that's been reported has been coin jams. So we focused a lot of our efforts on identifying, you know, the root cause of coin jam, looking at replacing components. We also had a lot of effort in doing preventative maintenance, which also is focused on the whole coin acceptance part of the process. So Andrew, what do you?
Yes, yeah, for sure. So what, what I spent a lot of, sorry, what I spent a lot of time doing was inspecting each and every pay station, which I've done, and highlighted the ones that had repeated occurrences of, of issues or alerts or notifications of errors. And one common thread I saw was, I observed that was that the preventative maintenance hadn't been done. So I went ahead and did that. I did that to each meter. And I have seen a tremendous improvement since then in terms of frequency of occurrence of, of jams and things like that. There will be jams, of course, since, you know, just like, there's like any machine that's out in the elements, you know, like cars, for example. The maintenance and things will come up that need to be tended to. Obviously, if it gets to a point where there's so many that it's unreasonable, that's, that's the issue. But I think we've come a long way from that with the preventative maintenance and we will continue to see that moving forward. If our recommendations are, are adhered to, that, that will be continued. And that could be done by, by the master technician perhaps, or, or by Lass or, or. So that's based on the observations we've seen and what I've seen so far. I think that will continue to improve to the point where it will be a lot of confidence and reliability.
And I, and I would say, you know, to the chief's point, right? That's what we have to do is continue to monitor, to see that improvement and make sure we've got to the root cause.
Mayor, I just have a follow up on that particular point regarding the, the biggest stat, the thing you just said makes sense. The, throughout the last year and for, you know, a good portion of 2024, if they went and fly, we spent a lot, a lot, a lot of time trying to figure out what was left of the meters and, and got to the order for T2. And ultimately it turned out that a lot of problems were because of the faulty software patch that was our firmware.
Yeah, it was a software version that was preventing users from going to sleep in after hours and that was draining the batteries and over time deteriorating. You take away the batteries. So that's been identified and, right? So it took us, and that's great that we figured that out. Okay. But it took us a long time to get to there. And my question kind of goes back to the whole maintenance. At any point through, through those interactions back and forth, like what we're trying to figure out what's going on. It took a, took a long time to get to that answer. At any point did somebody at T2 say, that's the maintenance? Because that seems like, like the, the, the councilmember Medina gets credit for the car analogy. That, that, you know, if I, if I bring my car and say, hey, this, you know, that I'm having all these problems with my car and the first thing they're going to ask is like, well, did you change your oil? I mean, you know, you. I, I want to know how we got to that because. Oh, understandable. And the, the issues we were presented with, the power, the power related issues didn't point to the maintenance. And that, that wasn't the, it, it, it wasn't, that wasn't prevalent at the time. And it wasn't until that issue was resolved that this one came, it revealed itself as a ongoing problem. That was underneath it, that saying.
So the particular issues that we were having were, wouldn't point to.
It didn't point to it. It would have been improved by, by.
We started saying that, yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you both each other.
Could I answer part of that question too? Because we, we did talk about this as people coming upward and other people leaving and retiring, et cetera. So I do think that there were a couple of times during our, people that Lass in particular had said, you know, we think you guys really need a, a technical person. And I think my observation, watching the police department, is they were trying really, really hard to keep the costs of the program low. And then I always think that there's also some people that are kind of really, like, really interested in. Unfortunately, I think what was happening is it was detracting them from other parts of their job. And I think when we started looking closer into it, we started saying, well, wait a minute. Our current contract for just employee collection, et cetera, doesn't really provide any type of technical programming or diagnostics. So we really started to believe that we needed to have the D D go back to their normal jobs and that we needed a technician. Now, you've read my report, the city of Glendale, they still have, I, city employees that do this kind of work. My guess is it's probably the kind of work that people retire and then it's hard to find people to do those things. But I think contracting with it makes a lot of sense for us. The other thing that T2 has agreed to do is to extend our warranty until next spring. We asked them to do that in light of the fact that we had changeover in staff and are just really trying to make this program work better. As the, as the mayor has said before, can you just get the machines to work? So we're kind of keeping all of that in our rearview mirror and just moving forward as to what it is that we need now. But I do think that everybody's now on the same page about what we need and what the goal is going forward.
And if I could just piggyback on that, I think the increase in complexity and the technical knowledge and the ability and need to work much more closely with T2 as we get those alerts and those high risk notifications has really required that level of technical expertise. But also Public Works has really stepped in to say that they are going to get someone who is more familiar with these meters as well to integrate with that technician so that we really have that carry through on the city side to be able to understand and, and, and not count so much on outside entities to be able to make sure that we are legitimately having a functioning meter program downtown.
Yeah. So we currently have four Lass personnel assisting the downtown and citywide. There's also a manager that comes with that. Is that right in the contract? I just want to understand really the, the depth of work that's happening here and how perhaps instead of hiring another physician or contracting another physician that instead of four people doing that work, of one supervisor, it could be any three people doing that work. And if it was the intention to have Lass be the master technician, the title, then okay, but we just can't continue taking hits to this program. So there, there is a supervisor.
There is one program manager.
Program manager, right, right. And that program manager is eight hours a day.
Correct.
Right hours a day. And that, that program manager can't be the master technician? I mean, I'm just trying to understand. Sorry, but I know you have an office. I know where your last vehicles are. I do a little scouting around every time. So it's like, I can imagine what the issues are, you know, like, well, how can we make a better solution before we kind of, pretty much I'm trying to do so that we could, we can deal with the top slider and we can go through each of the different things. But I'm trying to get to the solution here and trying to find a way that I can support this because I'm almost out. Because, so I perhaps should be asking, I'm asking city attorney, you should, came up, but I don't want to go beyond and put you on the spot. But it seems to me, one of the issues that we have with the balancing of enforcement downtown and it has gotten better, there used to be three people from Lass walking down the street. And it happened like for a couple of months where I was just seeing that repeatedly. And I was like, that's not a good sign. So there has to be this balancing part. And, and I still don't have enough information to, I don't think anybody here has enough information on council to comprehend what we're paying for and why is it still in the parking fund when it's outside of downtown? So I, I really want to hear and obtain better information on that to understand how is it that the downtown is taking the cost for citywide enforcement? And that's my understanding that what it is right now is no one's been able to get to tell me that it isn't. And that's my understanding that what it is right now is no one's been able to get to tell me that it isn't. The other thing and the mayor briefly mentioned is these citations, is that. Our share of it or is that the total cost of the citation? Because. Another question that I've asked previously is of a parking citation of forty or fifty dollars, what percent does that mean? So there's a long point question. I don't want to keep on bringing them back up, but I haven't heard the answer to them. But to deal with T two's contract and having this master technician, which seems like we missed that. So be it. We all made mistakes. We gotta go forward. We're not giving up on this system yet. So how can we make it happen to, to improve what we have for now? So that's the question I have out there. So to, to be able to have a better understanding because. I don't want to hear three months from now that, well, you know, we're now subsidizing this by three hundred thousand and. I think we need that information. I need that information. I apologize. I shouldn't ever speak on behalf of the council, but I'm speaking on behalf of people, so.
There's a lot, there's a lot to unpack there.
Yeah, I think there's two parts to the question and one maybe can be looked at is. Out of the citation. And I'll just get away from. Harvey saying streets here to fifty dollar ticket. How much of that is the city, uh, receiving? That can be my next question. That was part two. And then part one is about incoming all from the apartment. No, I'm sorry. So I think when the vice mayor is saying, okay, if there's five people in the contract. Can one person be directed to be that technician, master technician? In, in which to save the cost rather than going out on an annual basis for ninety two thousand dollars? So I don't know if that's in the contract. It probably is, but anyway, whoever wants to start that, they're responsible.
Do you think we need to answer, you may sort of. That the contract actually mayor Medina and vice mayor Medina, um. The, the contract has a scope of services that's several pages long. Right? And it lists all the things that Lass is going to do, which is generally parking enforcement and other things. Part of that is. We will, we will provide a baseline level of service with four enforcement officers working. However, many days, forty hours a week, right? So. In that, all the other services, there's probably a whole lot of overhead and things that they're doing. And so it's probably good that Lass got up and said, yes, we do have. Um, you know, supervisor and all of that, but the city's paying for a scope of services that's related to enforcement. And I think what we're talking about now is a higher level of. Maintenance that's not included in the contract. So it's not a matter of shifting people around because it's not in the scope of services at this point.
Jeremy.
That's, that's, that's what I recall. We have a, we have a. Contract that's been for up to five years that could be terminated in thirty days. There's always ways to renegotiate contracts. So we're looking for the best solution for everyone here. And if there was a way that we could work with last to. Facilitate changes that benefit cities financing and going forward and having. A system that finally operates the way that I think. I know I felt that parking is, that technology's been around for a long time. Enforcement's been around for a long time, so. I would have never voted to support Harvey Kiyos if I knew it done. It was in this to this point. And, and it's just fair. It's like, how problematic we have and let's get this working right. Our community is. I think willing to pay the price. They have been, it's just made it very, very difficult for them at times with. Meters or enforcement. I mean, we've had a lot of problems. So. How do we work together to provide the best system at the best price for it? Pretty much, I look at that. And having the citation revenue. Answered is finally going to give us some clarity on, on. How this is supposed to work and why it should be. Definitely differentiated. Because it's not, it's. I, I have a big problem with it. I had a problem with it for a while and then I, we need to have, I want to have certainty. And to understand that this is where that last contract, seventy percent of this downtown, thirty percent citywide, that's great. Somebody can track that. It shouldn't be that hard. You have a time sheet. There's two things you're doing. Either working downtown or you're working not downtown. And six hours a day was working downtown, two hours was doing something not downtown. All right, well, that can put in their code. I did time sheets. They have two lines on their time sheets. So it's important.
So just to add what the city attorney talked about, so a couple of things, um. So we did have that, uh, discussion with Lass, uh, and with T two about what is really needed in this technical person. And it, it's not the people that essentially, um. Collect the money for the city. It's a definitely, it's a different percentage, a different set of skills. And we talked to other cities about it and we're the same thing. Uh, whether or not that could be, uh, negotiated, um. Those four people that we have that are doing enforcement, it would essentially mean. You know, we would be negotiating something. Removing one and doing something that, that, I think, changes the, the program. With regard to the citation revenue, the numbers that we had up on the screen are real life numbers of. What comes into our system. Uh, the finance folks have, have definitely said that, you know, citations isn't lagging. This is what we have posted. It may not be what we end up collecting. Um, on your question about a fifty dollar ticket, you get about thirty six dollars and fifty dollar ticket. Um, and we, we might get nothing if the person doesn't pay and does the collections and we might get a smaller amount, but. Um, that's essentially what, what we got there. In terms of how the parking program on the setup is, um. I would say, uh, just in speaking with the captain here, most of the enforcement of Lass is done in downtown. And at the lots. However, we have asked them to do some, give out some of the duties that the previous community services officers did. Um, that was a bit of a trade in the, in the budget. We have less community service officers than we have labs. Um, in terms of how that was set up. I, it's not necessary for the parking fund. To pay only parking fund for downtown and parking fund for other parks of the city. It was set up that the entire parking fund would pay back into, um, the larger fund. And I, I just don't have the history of why that was done. Or, um, it's not unusual for the parking fund to pay for other pieces of a program. Throughout the city, but I'm, I'm not sure how it was set up. I asked, um. Admin services director if he can speak to that, but I'm not sure if he has that information either, assuming.
That's fair.
Can I add just that generally the outside parking, I'm sorry, I was going on that question. I'm sorry. For the mayor, generally the outside parking outside of the downtown is revenue underwriting the, the program for the downtown?
Well, what I was gonna say before Nick said anything was, you know, we're gonna go through budget, so we don't need, I don't need that information now, but. I would like that that information has to be approved of budget.
Evening. We're celebrating. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I need to snake the garrisons of the city's administrative services director and CFO. Um, uh, Miss Hentel, uh, characterized, uh, my, the understanding of the parking fund and why it was set up citywide versus just downtown parking. I don't have, I don't have any more information than it's, than it's already been shared. Um, but, you know, I think that as Captain Brandberg has said, has shared, uh, one of the big questions is, you know, how are the. Uh, resources allocated and, 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 you know, that fluctuates based on operational needs, I would imagine, by the department. Um, but, but to answer your question, I think that it is, uh, so it is data that we could. Work together and return to council.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you, CFO, for yours. Um, and another reason why I did, I bring this up about, and this is part of the balancing of. Because probably the biggest complaint. Is somebody goes here to you. Mayor mentioned this, I've already repeated. Maybe that one doesn't work. Then they're going over to this one. And they get that one to work and then they kind of like, okay, I'm cool. They do their shopping. They come back to their car and it's out of the. And so. The amount of enforcement that we have. There is a route. Last has it probably timed and like it should be able to happen so often in a cycle. And so if the cycle was. Extended for more time. Then that person who experienced that problem. It would probably show up in the system because instead of that ten minutes. It would take twenty minutes for last to come back. And we're, what, what we're interested in is making their service turnover. So the, the cars, the shoppers moving through our, our downtown in twenty, thirty minutes, that's great. Because it achieved the purpose. So I think at this point, our. The majority of our shoppers and, and business owners and their employees, they figured it out. Right? We have parking meters downtown, but it's that time that where there'd be, they're. Getting a ticket and it's great, or actually it isn't great that we're, we're settling all those, um. Citation, contesting the citation because that takes time. And what I'm hearing is how frustrating that is because the person knows they pay and we all know if you paid or not, right? You pay for your ticket, you see it on your phone. And then you have, I mean, you pay for the, for your space. You get a ticket, you're like, now I have to contest this citation and it's just like, you know. I'm sure most people will be very upset about that. So if we were able to balance, and I think. What we heard last time was it was pivoting the amount of enforcement so that there's more time. Or the little miscues in the communication to, to happen that we'd be better off. Cause we're already seeing that it's at eighty percent. So the enforcement, I feel, should just find a way to coast a little bit more. And the question, if that, that's happening now. We're going to be fixing the system. So what? To provide an insurance buffer for that is what would, what would providing the twenty minutes free parking downtown do? So you show up. Got twenty minutes, right? You show up. I know I can do my shopping in twenty minutes if I need to go get. Some tomatoes or some broccoli and carrots that I always am down to getting those things or. Going to get a beer or anything else. It doesn't take twenty minutes to do that. So you get twenty minutes to reparking. And, well, you know, I'm gonna be there for half an hour. I go ahead and put my money in there. Use the app, whatever way, it doesn't matter, but in twenty minutes. That system should be able to catch that, right? That, that, I guess that's my question. That in twenty minutes, there should be no problem with. The T two connecting to the cloud, connecting to the device that gives vaccines, somebody's hand. And what this also does is, is twenty minutes to reparking. You want to come downtown and just pick something up? Go for it. Or maybe it's only twenty minutes free in the parking lot. But whatever it is, it's a convenience to our shoppers to be able to. Go ahead and do their shopping and not worry about getting a ticket if it's there for twenty minutes. And if it's wind up that they were there for forty. I don't care if they were there for forty. We're getting the turnover. They're not staying there like they did in the past for hours on time. We waited this long to get data that shows that we're at eighty. I don't think this is too much, but maybe I could hear staff. Or T two saying, yeah. How, how would, I know some of your other machines have an option where you push the button, but how would it work? To be able to provide twenty minutes reparking for anybody?
Well, so two things I can say, I think I'll speak for the, the, uh, law enforcement, but it would be tremendously difficult. For them to do any type of enforcement. Is there, we have four people, we don't have four hundred, uh, officers. So there's, there's that. And then I'll also say that. In a very respectful way, this is kind of the reason why we're not able to keep moving forward on some of the parking issues. Is that there keeps getting to be things that are added and also items that are being discussed that. Have been discussed and answered previously. And I, I know it's frustrating and I know that there's some things that. Um, so I'll take the first one first. We are receiving way less comments and, um, and complaints about the. Hey, I was punching in my license plate number and I got a ticket. Uh, the last officer, I understand now is taking photos. When they do ticketing to show that there was nobody at Kiyos. Now. We did receive a complaint this week that I think one of you forwarded to us. Somebody showing their ticket and their payment. And I do think that there are some things like that, but it's, it's very few and far between, but I think you keep hearing about the same things. Um, but I would not recommend that we spend. Time trying to figure out with the, with the new twenty minute reparking downtown. I don't even know how you reinforce that.
Yeah, I, it, it's a little mind boggling. I don't know that we could come up with that. I don't know that. I've heard of that before and I think it's sort of antithetical to the. Behavior compliance and it, it sends cross signals. So I don't think it's something that I'm aware of or that. We really could achieve within the constructs of what our parking program is. I do think, however, council member Medina from you particularly, we have been very instructive to Lass to try and. Uh, put forth a more, uh, relaxed enforcement profile to achieve some of that largess.
Got it. So then especially for T two, the models that we have here don't have the capability of reparking.
Uh, uh, it absolutely can. You, you, you have the capability to do it. It would be done by means of a rate. You can put a, a zero dollar rates into the machine. So it works just like any other rate, but it won't charge any parking. The caveat is you still have to visit the pay station to enter your license plate so that the enforcement officers would then understand that that's. Parker, that, that end user has, uh, initiated that zero dollar transaction. So they haven't paid anything. But their plates are in the systems, they won't get a citation, but they still have to visit the meter.
No, it's great. I saw your other models have the actual green button that said free. I believe, but the current system does allow.
Yes, yes, you can, you can have the, the screen say free parking twenty minutes and you can make that selection. Absolutely. Okay, we can do that, yes. Any more questions? Cause I do, we have two staff recommendations. Uh, we've, uh. Heard they reported and answered questions, but again, I, I do want to get to the recommendations of staff. To, to staff. It is, I'm going to say, it is true that. Said, uh. We sign up. Uh, based on the two thousand nineteen study and then the end result, we are meeting that result. And at the same time, when we come to the, uh, master technician, that was something we didn't know, put them down. Uh, most establishes here wasn't here, so it's not about closing claims about what is the solution? To get to the end result, which is let's make sure they work. Um, but we keep, we keep. We're on one on one. We keep taking off turns and I think that's what I'm hearing. And so, uh, I know we were going to get to these two, but council members, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh. I believe what I heard is that. Most of the. Maintenance that we require has to do with coin slots game. Misaligned, jammed, twisted up, so they don't set coins. Um, and, and I get it. We're, we're basically putting computers. Out on the street in the elements and a lot of people will stick foreign objects in and say, they're gonna need, they're gonna need some attention. Uh, I get that. Uh, but also looking at the staff report. I see, um, we, we have a couple of, um. Graphs in here, one of them showing that, um, fourteen point eight six percent of the transactions or cash transactions, the rest are credit cards. Only fourteen percent. Um, that require. Or, or 14% of the transactions are generating probably most of the damage to the machine or. When, when there isn't a problem with the, with the machine, it's because of these 14% of the transactions. That aren't able to be completed. And, uh. Also looking at just, uh, you know, the credit card payments, uh, 63% of the credit cards are being. Used at the kiosk versus, uh, mobile pay. And so kind of getting back to this whole idea of can we focus more attention on the mobile option? I think that would not only, uh, give more people to be using the mobile option versus the kiosks. Uh, but also. Possibly compel some of that 14% to move to the credit card option if they feel that it's more secure. Being that it's, it's a, an app on their phone that they trust, they got it from the Apple store or the Google server. So they trust it versus scanning a QR code which could easily be manipulated. And so I think from a security standpoint, people may feel more comfortable and not rely on, on the coins as much. And so that. Perhaps reduces our dependence on. Uh, that, that maintenance that could potentially happen. But I think in the short term, until we get there, there probably is a need to keep this going. Uh, the complaints that we're still hearing about, you know, the machine's not working. So let's. Let's do what we can to keep them going, but I think that. If we actually make the, the correct investment. We will work to move away from getting those coins in that box, getting people away from those boxes. And giving them a, an easy solution that they can use without ever having to walk to a box. It's a problem of, you know, I, I was gonna pay, but didn't make it back. The machine's broken, so I couldn't pay. Kind of gets away from all that and. I, I think that that is really where we need to focus our energy. So I'm not opposed to doing this, um. Maintenance person in the interim, but I think that the real focus needs to be on, on getting this better solution. And, uh, just by request, we're going to take a five minute, uh, recess and then come back with this.
Two final questions so we can get to tonight's recommended, uh, action that staff is asking, uh, Councilmember Hau.
Yeah, so I have, I have a question. Um, it goes, it goes back to the budget and I know it's a second, we're finding out that we beat the dead horses too much, but. So we were talking about the, um, the. Meter revenue. Going into the parking fund and then the enforcement costs coming out of the parking. And then we all, but we're also hearing that the, and then the enforcement is citywide. So I don't know, don't put my car on the street every day, that, that sort of enforcement. But the citation revenue that we're seeing in all the numbers has to hold a need for. Citations that are being made that would happen. So there is other citation revenue that's being generated by the last people who are being funded only from our meters that is going elsewhere.
Yes, that's correct. And, and I think. The reason we did it that way was to assist you all because you were looking at the true costs of time loss. For revenue and citation revenue. So we didn't want to add in all of the other city.
Right, no, no, I, I understand that and I appreciate that. It really helps us to focus in on what's happening with the program. But then, then also. It's another stressor on the budget and the whole, for the whole program because that's a bunch of, that's, that's. We're trying to make the bottom line. We're trying to hit the targets that we talked about at the beginning, but. Did those, did all that, did all of the, the, the rosy numbers that we saw earlier on include paying for citywide enforcement? Yeah, including that without any, without any revenue coming from all of that extra enforcement. Sounds like, sounds like Michael might.
Yes, I, I remember a conversation from early on. It's always been a line item in the police budget. That is revenue from those citations. And I remember asking the question is, will that money now go to the parking program? And the answer was, no. Because the police department budget depends on that money. So we could remove it and, and put it in the. Uh, in the parking, uh, fund, but then that will leave a gap on the police side, which we did not want to do at the moment, so. I do remember that comment. So just in terms of, you know, did we count on it? I don't think we've ever counted for that money being there. Okay, thank you for reminding me.
Um, just as a matter of, I see our CFO up here, we are restructuring. Uh, no, Nick, if you wanted to talk about that, we are restructuring the, the fund and the citation revenue.
Sure, thank you, Chief. Um, the recollection of Councilmember Salazar is correct that, uh, when the, um. When the parking fund was set up, a certain percentage of the citation revenue stayed in the general fund. Uh, for the exact reason that you mentioned. Um, question of whether all of those funds should then go to the parking fund is a separate policy question. But right now, all of the citation revenue that is, that's generated in, as a result of the paid parking program. Is a hundred percent of that is going to the parking fund. So we're really talking about legacy enforcement costs, uh, and the desire to keep those in. Uh, the general fund was a great, was a best decision. Uh, but going forward, all of the, and for since we've. This year, we've, uh, we, we've taken the effort to make sure that the revenues are going to the right.
Great, thank you. I'm glad I asked the question. Thank you, Councilmember for your advice. My name's. I know you went to the end. Should I go ahead and just kind of say what I'm actually, what I'm. Thinking about here. I absolutely agree with Councilmember Salazar for the comments about the mobile app and how that, that maybe investments. Central investments there could improve the, through the program and I am for that. So how do the whole remote counting falls one? I do, um. I do stand cognizant about pulling too many levels.
Recommendations.
That is a, um, that's a, a real issue. Pulling too many levels, you don't know which ones is effective or not. And, um. I do. So the two things that I was coming in here leaning towards being, yes, is on could be. Age ten rate that, that most pride, I telegraphed about later. Um, and then also health community. And we didn't talk about health community at all. Very much curious to, to be able to have a consultation. My thought there on health, I don't, you know, is that. First of all, it's bringing, it's currently bringing 1.7%. This is. Um, so we will essentially eliminate. Health community, our parking, it's not, it's, it's not, it's not part of the, it's not really not part of the equation. I understand the desire to say, well, there's gonna be a lot more, a lot more, um. Uh, demand on those spaces when the, the development of the stuff. Um, because it's soon to be a park. And. My concern now. Is that. I live, I'm living in that place and I, um. And there's only, there's only 25 parking spaces for 136 of them. And I, so now I'm. I didn't have, I happen to have a car, which I think is going to be likely with many of us there. Um. Parking on a health community, I want to pay. For every, uh, for every two hours, there really is, there'd be an option. That's gonna drive that car. And cars are gonna be there regardless. And it's gonna drive there. Um. I just wanted, but, but again, because I don't want to come in here and call full night lovers. I am not going to go all in on. Uh, that name, the, the kiosk, don't get me annoyed this time. One of the other reasons I would, I should just leave my thought on it though. If we do remove some of those meters, those are actually those are extra meters that would have preserved place for months. So that's another thought about that, you know, we're going to spend extra money to bring in replace their meters for place for months or whatever. We wouldn't necessarily do that. But I do just somehow I want to I want to support the this this staff recommendation, you know, we're looking, but I know where we are. And then again, we have to look ahead and not you know, we've got lots and lots of questions about how how we got here, but ultimately regardless, we're here. The way forward is to get the program. So I'm in favor of the initial funding for the contract management commission position and for the I mean for kiosk reinstallation. I'm in favor of the investing in the lab option and having that brought back to us. And I'm also in favor of changing the changing time to be to be to be to 10 a.m. Basically started for about 10 a.m.
Okay, so four items. And I think you answered a couple of questions of staff's recommendations.
Next question. Apologies. Susan, I I see my I'm circling back on on the space mirror. And I did a little bit of a little bit of reading about the other system of the space, which is ANPR technology. And it also eliminates basically running the ticket. And I I know that you mentioned we're we're paying for the the ALPR. I I just think that if we have the space number, the turnover is much quicker because it's it's less time spent on kiosks. And it's probably more efficient. And I'm just wondering, if you have the space number, what would that entail when it comes to maintenance without considering payment? You know, we we keep the way we're we're utilizing the kiosks.
I think that may be a T2. Go ahead and then Laz real quickly. What would that entail in terms of both efficiency and changes?
I can speak to that. In terms of efficiency or difficulty of programming, it's very, very simple to do, extremely simple. What I do want to highlight or I want to give a consideration that just thinking of your goals of utilization and and turnover. If you have a pay by states environment, when you pay for that space, that space essentially you're renting the space for a given period of time. When the car leaves, that space is still accounted for and someone else can come in and park there, piggybacking off of that last transaction. Whereas if it's a pay by license plate, the plate is leaves with the vehicle, someone else parks there, that's a brand new transaction. So you it's actually from a financial perspective, less efficient to use pay by space because they're going to have people essentially paying for each other's parking inadvertently. As opposed to having to stick with the vehicle. Another added benefit to the pay by license plate is that the the end user is going to feel more value out of it because if they're only there for 10 minutes or 20 minutes and they have to pay for an hour or whatever it is, they're going to, you know, essentially forfeit that whenever they leave the space. If they pay for the plate, they can park elsewhere in the city and keep that transaction where someone else parks in that space they were previously in. There's a new transaction. Now that space has been paid for. Now the space isn't paid for twice, but the plate is. So I think those are considerations with regards to your goals that you consider.
Right. And and I don't know how much more time you want to spend on it because I think with the ALPR technology and the ways in which we enforce now, which are so much more efficient that unless you want us to go further into that, I think we're already committed to this, at least through the four year program.
Thank you. I think we needed to hear that. I needed to hear that explanation.
Thank you. Thank you. Other final comments and helping the staff's recommendation?
Yes, thank you. So we have 82 kiosks. About how many of them are currently operating now? The ones I know, you know, if we remove those, how many are those? And those are kind of like two questions right here on top of my head. Like we haven't done an update in a while about how many of the kiosks are operating, but I mean, is it that easy? Like daily you could tell and generate a report that spits out weekly, monthly, quarterly, all that new information?
Yes, I I personally see those reports every day, just so I can stay on top of of these issues you're having. And yes, you can see them on demand. And currently, right now, a meter is operational. Okay, I think you brought that to me.
So how many kiosks are on El Camino?
The number, I'm really bad at math. Let me choose. I know there's about 53 in the downtown. All right, so the restaurant.
Fifty three, eighty two, fifty three, twenty nine, twenty nine.
Okay, that's a lot of different. Are we sure we're not, when you say 29, we're not talking about the lodge, we're not talking about the science trees? Yes, yeah, honey, 10.
We're not taking those considerations.
Yeah, right.
I think that the old managers just want.
And I'll I'll put my plug in for why we should go ahead and be prepared. It takes time to service them. Based on the math, we're getting around $70 a day on El Camino on revenue. So we have to service them. That takes more time. You have to control it more frequently. That takes more time. So if we were to go back to the two hour, I think it's maximum amount of time to park there. And I see you might have it.
I do. Yes, there are 21 meters currently on El Camino office.
So that pretty much allows a good amount of meters to be in storage, be capitalized, take this one out, put that in there, that would improve the efficiency of our system. Because when it comes down to it, it's not generating the revenue. There's not people parking there. There's plenty of parking down El Camino because otherwise we'd be seeing a lot more revenue. And that squeeze isn't worth the juice on El Camino reserve.
He's working on it.
I tried to make a joke, but so that's why I'm in favor of removing it. It's not, it never was a problem. And I can tell you, you know, I wasn't able to vote on that. So I wanted to ask the city attorney if I couldn't vote on determining the limits for the and I've asked before, I want to make sure I don't make a mistake. But if I wasn't allowed to dictate or vote on the layout of where the parking meters are installed, am I allowed to comment on where one day should be removed?
So Vice Mayor Medina, I will, it's a complicated question. I think there was the reason you were able to vote on one thing and not the other was because there is a an exception regarding those are resolutions and ordinances. So I will need you to go back and look at that. And I will follow up with you.
Okay. But I can comment on it directly. I can continue advocating that they should be removed or. I remit.
Wait, you already.
Yes, a couple of times. So I'm I guess I'll move forward.
If you would mind, just give me a few minutes, maybe others go speak and I can take a look and.
All right, I'll I'll finish off. So that was the one thing. The mobile pay app, of course, looking to do that. And with the additional information provided by Councilman Salazar, it makes sense. If we could push people to not use the coins, then it'd be less maintenance. So I believe today we confirmed that we can change it to 50 cents per hour instead of a dollar for two hours for cash transactions. And allowing those that don't have cash to go ahead and pay a dollar or pay the 50 cents with the transaction fee, whatever it would be, whatever is most convenient or most canal canal for them. So that's not on our list, but I think that's something we should move forward on that. Like it was empowered with the police chief to be able to make those adjustments, which the previous chief did. But it's helpful that we give direction. If that's allowed, I think we should do it. It's the same thing.
I'm going to be looking for a motion and a settlement on all of these things.
Sure. Let let me I can get to the council on taking notes and then we'll circle back as a chair.
Right. So those are the main things. I I think right now we have 100% operation with the work that's being done. I I think that coming back, you know, working in three months, yeah, it's still working. And then it's like, so maybe not today saying hey, a full year, but I'm not sure who is doing the work. It sounded like Slaz has someone available to do that contract work for the master master that person. No. So it might be a while, a number of months, or how long would that take to bring somebody in to do that work?
So we previously asked that question of Les and they thought it would take somewhere between two weeks and a month to. Is that still accurate?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, those are my comments. I I still am apprehensive about going forward with I know it's the term of pulling levers, but we have to have a realistic model of how this is going to pay or whatever portion that is. Because otherwise, we're clearly subsidizing the budget through the general fund. So we need to do that. This is a couple levers, but there's more work that remains ahead. And I think that we would benefit by having a staff committee assist working with staff on it. I understand it doesn't have to stop budget process. But we need to go forward and continue talking about how to make this system better. And we are to this point now with what was decided, mobile pay app is another thing, but so those are my comments for now and now moving forward here to my colleagues.
Yeah, so I'm taking notes. They said El Camino removed, my mobile app got I got the 50 cents cash and cash plus transaction fee. I'm just writing all sorts of things. And then what about the service tech? I should ask the question about the time.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So it could be implemented in two weeks and then maybe not for a full year, see how it works. But it seems like we're going to need it. So we need to maybe conditionally to say that we will give it a six month trial, a pilot. You know, we've always been asking for six months, if not more in time or data. So giving six months in the contract. And it seems like last could provide that in two weeks. So we will hopefully be in a much better place in six months and we'll get the reports back out and have additional data that's data that's going to be more reliable and that shows strength. And then this will know we're in a better spot. So thank you for this quick thinking.
Other colleagues?
One more question that came to mind regarding the reinstallation that you mentioned in the recommendation. What exactly does that entail?
So in our conversations with Les and talking a little bit about asking everybody's opinion on what is needed out there. Both Les and T2 did mention that there are some kiosks that are installed, perhaps not in the best location. Some because of overhang and tree blocking solar panels. Others just because it's it's it doesn't make sense for where it is on the street. And so we asked for some additional money just to have lands. We did the original installation to work with public works on some of the areas that public works identified where the guests should know that they actually should be facing a different way or maybe moved down a few inches or feet. Some do need to be re leveled. We have a couple that maybe got hit by a car, backed into work, something that are maybe need to have a little bit of intention. So there's under tales in the city.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I, as I said before, I support the adding the technician to the contract. And I think that's probably necessary and that will eliminate any inconvenience that are related to the maintenance facilities. And another thing I heard during the staff presentation was the possibility of changing the terms of the repayment of the loan. And I am interested in in pursuing that option. I I what I've seen on social media is like these gross exaggerations of the actual financial standing in the program. And I think a big portion of what we're seeing is that 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 payback does in it does impact what appears to be the actual performance. We may sign that over a longer period of time so that it becomes more reasonable to get to somewhere where we actually create a more realistic, more telling story about what the program is actually doing. I think that will help with the public perception. So hoping to see our discussion on that and what it would take to actually get us or even if it's just adding a couple more years or even a lot more years to have repayment. But I I think that will help tell a more realistic story. So I have the releveling tech and the repayment.
Thank you, Sir Mayor. So I'm also figure eliminating pay parking on Sunday, figure to remove El Camino parking meters and support additional funding for the contracted master commission position. And chance for conversion, I'm watching for that.
Okay, so I have the tech, yes. I have Sunday.
Yeah, eliminating pay parking on Sunday.
On Sunday, yeah. It's just that Sunday.
And the El Camino, I mentioned that.
I just I'm summarizing, so I make sure I'm checking the boxes here. Okay. All right. So let me read back what I have. And okay, so I have on the master tech, I'm in agreement with that. So staff has good direction that is all five of us to concur with that, what the suggestion was, was in regards to pilot or six month for data. But that means we're that arrangement now.
And and thank you, dear members of council. I would also just clarify, does that also include the re leveling replacement, the 25,000 for the additional? There was a sort of a two pronged recommendation. You kept saying the tech side. That's to make sure it's clear for the installment side as well.
Let me go back down the line as far as any kiosk Yes, I have a this is a study session. I'm going to have a good motion. Yeah, I'm trying to get it. So yes, I am in favor of the of the 25,000 to do that. It it does bring up some, it does bring up one specific scenario, one of the one of the kiosks I want to see the the mobile desk in lot number eight, there's a kiosk in lot number eight, which is near there. And for reasons I don't I don't understand, they put they took away a space. They took away a parking space to put in the put in the kiosk when there is an empty and empty curves that used to have a plant in it that clearly could have. So I would love to just look at that. Who knows? Maybe there's something underground that makes it impossible that I'm aware of, but a real site like that because taking away a space for no reason.
So from the rest of this issue, yes or no for the 25,000?
So from rest of this issue, yes or no for the twenty-five thousand? Yes, it's like, yes, yes, yes. Yes, Sandy?
Yes.
Yes, sure. Okay, and so yes, and I'm very, I'm very sorry, but I will, I. Was kind of keeping on the El Camino thing, because I want to pull too many levers and not get support for other things, but. No, I have you down. Okay, okay, so, uh. So let's go to the El, the app. Um, I'm also not everybody had mentioned that, but I'm in concurrence. That is three, that I count.
Of the app.
Three, four. Okay, so four. And then on El Camino. Um, I do want to ask this question because in essence, I just don't remember off the top of my head. Free parking is after the hour of six or eight? Because it's still two hours, so they still have to move. Doesn't include that. I just forgot.
Do you guys know? Do you know? No. Scott? No.
El Camino was a parking six, six, thank you. Okay, so that's already has three anyway, but I just, I guess what I also want to make a citation of. I always worry and I need to count them and said it's most about Sundays. If you say it's okay, then you take it back because it was there. It's so hard to take things back. So, you know, with with kiosks being. Removed or not removed, um, there still is, uh, lives will still be going by and still will be ticketing for the two hours. So it doesn't guarantee anybody gets the part, not maybe that's six o'clock. That would be another story. Uh, reading team was uh mentioned.
Yeah.
By council member Salazar, um, I'd also think it doesn't hurt to look into anything, um, just to see that, but only had two uh concurrences. So that doesn't have enough to go.
Well, can I ask you a question? I I think it said in the chat report that that was gonna be looked at as 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 part of the budget. So I think we're already, I think we're already into that as part of the budget, maybe we could get it, we're not.
No, it's it was just something that I uh that I said much of the chubron of the admin services director. Who probably is not really happy about that, but.
He got close, he's he's lurking towards the likes of pumping.
Yeah, may I may I ask you to actually do a motion in a second and a vote on something?
Excuse me, I said I would.
Okay.
Allow me to be the mayor in the chair and get through the process and get us down so. No, we're not doing one by one, we're gonna pump it all together, the city attorney gives me a thumbs up and a smile, and then we're gonna move forward and vote. Um, so on the repayment, since I think we've got clear now, then it really wasn't part of the discussion of, and okay, so there is three. And then on Sundays, that uh uh had one, and I'm. Still concerned about the high bottom, so that that's a no. Um, there was also.
Weird, oh, I apologize, I know, I'm sorry.
And can you let me, because I'm I'm voting now too, so let let we go have an opportunity. Um, fifty cents and hour media cash of the transaction fee. Um, that um had one, but didn't have any other takers at this time. All right, okay, so.
I I would like us to look into it, but uh just to just see how it works.
I have two on that. Um, and then on the uh last item was on the eight to ten AM um uh free parking, which would be. To me, it would need to be uh throughout the system, not some streets, not other streets. I have reservations on on both sides, because we don't want to pull too many levers, and I think that's right. Um, so for me, I I think at this time, because I drive down there at seven thirty, eight, eight thirty in the morning, a lot of times now. Oddly enough, I count cars and parking lots, and I count uh on San Mateo Avenue, just to kind of get, as we said. You physically want to go out there and see, and so we know. So in the lots, I do have some concern because I I do um. See that if we had done like the Sunday day stay from Saturday until maybe streets will be on the next possible day. I mean, I'm I'm interested in looking to that for the eight to ten, um, uh, for our system. I just also have my hesitation because it's it's hard to go back. You you can't can't give it and take it back. But I, just by what I see, I don't see the. The normity of what we're trying to do that is revenue loss. So those are my. Three, I think that's three. So what I've gotten from this is. Master tech, yes, with the twenty-five thousand installation, yes. Looking at a mobile app, yes. El Camino Real. Uh, majority, yes. Uh, um, repayment, yes. Um, fifty cents, um, the tracking does not have three, and the eight. AM to ten AM had three and then Marty, I'm sorry, you said you had something in session. I just wanted to get through that.
Um, so yes, eight, eight to ten, I would least in favor of the three, I'd also go down there by a bit and. There's plenty of space. And then I was in favor of three Sundays, so that definitely answers.
Okay, thank you.
I rebased, rebased game and.
Oh, thank you, I think, yes.
So uncovered.
Okay, thank you. So, um, at this time, what I'd be lo- looking for is a motion. That would um approve the hundred twenty thousand in additional funding for a contracted master technician position. Of ninety-five thousand and a kiosk, re-installations of twenty-five thousand where needed to be added. To the pay parking program. We're gonna take this in two motions, just so this one's very clear and uh specified, and I think it has all the votes. So, boom, second. So, uh, motion and second, uh, to approve as read by the mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five.
Maritina?
Yes.
We actually close the loop with Vice Mayor. Right, so there is a uh special circumstance of exception that we need to make with effects. And considering this, Bill will agree in addition to that. The the thing that you were recusing from a while ago was not fit those because it was related to the contract, but. You're fine to vote on that.
Okay, so that takes care of the master tech and the twenty-five thousand. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion? Um, in regards to the other items and say in terms of the bringing together, which you might then, why might I?
Mayor, I I do not have a preference as long as the motion is clear and provides this direction that staffs will be for.
I was just gonna say that I will not be able to vote in favor of all of that stuff together because I don't agree with all of it. And then upon the El Camino, I wanted to clarify too, is it very quick? Is it to remove them? Is it to leave them for a little bit? To see how the development goes forward? So let's just be kind of clear on the motion maker to give that direction to staff too. Just sort of, I thought everyone here would quite least do this.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to remove the parking kiosks on El Camino Real, uh, at the earliest convenience.
I'll second. Motion and second to remove, uh, on the question. On the question, I I would just want to say that, um, I I understand the interest in. Having meters sitting there and not doing anything, but even seven, seventy dollars a day is is revenue that adds up. Um, even if they're not used, and and I'll reiterate that. Uh, we don't know that the meters don't incur some of the very same problems that we anticipate will occur. Meaning that that there are already displaced vehicles from San Mateo Avenue that are looking for someone else to park. And they're not on El Camino now, but, um, you know, maybe they they do want to be. And I I I understand we still want to enforce the the two-hour restriction. But now there's no regret for that, whereas it was partially offset by the the thing. I I did have a concern about the one, um. Single-family home that's on El Camino that's impacted by that, and that's such a weird situation, and I wish there was something we could do to. Uh, address just that situation, but um, I I know that if you. If you're enforcing it everywhere else, the cars would just, you know, they'll eventually find their way there, so I don't, I don't think there's an easy solution to that. I don't think that meters at this point is really gonna help anything. Um, so I. I won't, I won't be supporting it, but it's because I I just don't see the the actual benefit of doing. And and uh, councilor Salazar, as far as, you know, we have uniqueness downtown, and that's the churches, that's the uh. Monastery preschool, that is also residential in El Camino, which is such a unique, so what. You know, they have to go somewhere else, or when the church lot, they're gonna park over there and park. Uh, over, so I I I would wish for there's something that can be looked into eventually for that, because it is just such a unique. Situation. Um, I I will say that I, though I'm okay with the El Camino, I'm not okay at this time removing them. I just think that the uncertainty of not knowing, uh, is is it's gonna be very hard to take it down and say, oh. Has mainly thought are new, and so just all the signs, I just should bring, take half the cost of removing them. Um, that part I I I can support, but on the question, um, anything else on discussion? So the motion is to um have it free on El Camino and physically have at the earliest convenience remove uh. The kiosks. There's a motion and uh. Uh, Marty Medina motion and seconded by Mr. Hamilton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, I pass this three, two. Oops, um, do we really need to make a motion as far as looking into repayment? Staff is saying. And we're all okay, right? Nobody disagrees.
We will come back to the budget process, maybe this year, next year, but we'll come back and and make sure we continue to balance.
And when it comes to the mobile app or pay device, how would staff feel that that's best?
We'll, we'll continue to investigate this. We we really struggle getting responses from the mobile app. The mobile app providers, um, thank you, to be sure our phone calls can.
Yeah.
We will explore this. I I understand maybe somewhere in the room might actually have an app that we might be able to acquire, so.
Um, is everybody okay with that? Let's see, no, no's from any five, any of the five of us up here. That leaves the last one, and that is, uh. Oh, I'm sorry, there's two more, I apologize. The fifty cents uh plus transaction fee in the lots.
Sure, um, providing direction to staff to proceed with allowing fifty cents per hour in parking lots downtown. Instead of the minimum of two hours.
Can I clarify? You have the cash only?
Oh, right, so I'm sorry. So we did talk about the costification of. Making sure that we were covering that transaction cost, so. Um, the motion would be to allow fifty cents with every covering of the transaction cost. So if somebody wanted to pay fifty cents with cash, they can do it. If somebody wanted to pay fifty cents with a card, they have covered the transaction loss.
I'll second that. Motion and second, I'm gonna question, I'm gonna look this down just to make sure it's doable, uh, and made sense, uh. Et cetera, just because I saw this discussion. I'll tell this.
Yeah, we were just um trying to determine how the rates were adopted the last time. We know we need to bring something back, and I was just asking if it was on by ordinance. So if it was on by resolution, and we just have to, but it'll come back. It won't, it won't happen tomorrow, because I think we have this, we have the back to do.
Perfect, okay. So there's a motion and second, yes, absolutely. I I understand that there is interest, by by as Paul, which is on a payment loss, but I think this goes. Completely against what we were trying to do in the first place, which is get people off of San Mateo Avenue. That have a long return rate and push them a lot to get people with short-term needs into the lots. That's why we did the race we did, so that short-term parkers stay on San Mateo Avenue, longer-term parkers go into the lots. I don't see the benefit of shortening that period, though. It I it just goes completely against everything we're trying to. And I won't myself, I can't support it either. But there is a motion and a second, um, Tom Hamilton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Okay. Three, two, three. So is that, I know that wasn't even part of, again, we added something, which we tend to do, even though we kind of. Start off with our strategy and laws and has changed dramatically, that's the pick, we'll adapt. So I think. Okay, we have one more.
Third case, and I do have, I may add just to bear your.
Absolutely, of course.
So one thing you guys have not brought up, and there's a second recommendation from staff, decided adjusting the rates. Uh, it's authorized against the adjuster, it's no one has said it. Uh, don't hear that, and I'm, you know me, I'm gonna call it, so. It's this question around, you're now subsidizing parking in our downtown. And the general funds will be picking up these costs. Our general fund has a four million dollar deficit right now. And I just want to make it abundantly clear what you're doing, and is there permission for us to adjust the rate so that we can? Or is there intentionality to subsidize more parking in the downtown? Remember, we're already subsidizing parking in the downtown.
Okay, and this is. If you don't send it? Okay, that's why you're getting, pausing us. Uh, so the, uh, we're gonna go, this Sunday had two last I had it. So I don't think that, is there a third person that wants free Sundays? No? Okay, so, um, I'm gonna say we don't have that, but we still have eight to ten, which is, that knows into your question. I think I am the El, you know, and the El Camino, because being narrow that scope and whatever costs might be adjusted by the fifty cents.
We're changing the law, guys, that's what you're doing here. So we have, the question is, is it your intention to subsidize from the general fund?
No, and it says it right here, it said that staff recommends increasing pay parking rates. By amount that will recapture the revenue loss, as well as to change corresponding signage, et cetera, which is also a cost. Uh, which. Everything costs, so, um. So that's gonna need to be, uh, with part of that consideration now. This, you know, if there's, well, there already is going to be, we've already changed the model. You pulled eleven or two, so are we prepared to do that? The mayor, um, the. All right. What were you going on there? Um. I completely understand why you want to. To 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 do that. Um, it makes, it makes absolute visceral sense. Because of the. Troubles that this has had, and then what's, what it's done to our, to our credibility, I keep raising rates at this time. It's not, it's not a very, and I do, I do, I do know that that means that we need to. Um, subsidize, and I'm not saying that we should never, never raise in the future, but I think for now, I would not, I would not support. With rates. Um, until we get, start getting, realizing all the benefits that we're holding to care from having the master. Well, I can appreciate that too, but I can appreciate that too, but it's also setting expectations. These things have happened, and now the reason rates, the narrative comes, oh, guess what, we're getting a break, or things are changing, oh. Of course, we just raised the rates, um, and they waited. They didn't want to do that, they wanted to wait a little bit. So, and then we're gonna go back to the CFO and the city manager and say, it's much time. So figure out where you're gonna find the rest of the money, then we took away from measure G, or then we did those other things, so I think. Then you have to make an adjustment, uh, and then the budget cycle, I think that would happen if just to be a chart person. Councilman Salazar. Thank you. We we've been asked by the public to be compassionate about what we do to, um, to the community. And, you know, raising rates is is one of those things, from the very beginning, we said we want to keep the rates as low as possible, we want this to be successful. And that's the way we're going to do it. Um. As opposed, I am to raising the rates, I think we knew that that's gonna be a a reality. Once the program set in place, and that's why we we gave the police chief the authority to operate within a band. I think it was like a one-dollar to three-dollar ban, huge ban, that we gave permission to, because we knew that there were gonna have to be adjustments. Um. I I wouldn't have a much easier conversation with my constituents in telling them that the reason we have.
in telling them that the reason we have to extend the hours of enforcement is because it helps keep those rates down, versus telling them no, now everybody in the city is going to have to take more out of the general fund, out of what they pay, out of their taxes, to subsidize the few people that go downtown to shop. Um, that, that's a hard sell for me, so um, if we are going to go down the route of saying, we're willing to give away revenue that we're currently getting because there's empty spots, then I, I don't know how you can say it's okay for everybody else to make up that, that revenue. Uh, and that's basically what you're saying, is that every taxpayer in the city is going to have to pay for this generosity that you're offering, uh, just because the lots aren't full, so, um, I don't see how you can say yes to one and, and no to the other, cause they go hand in hand. If, if you're, if you're giving up the revenue, it's gotta come from someone, and it shouldn't come from everybody else's, uh, taxes. But I know we, yeah, I do hear, I'm starting to hear a little bit about the, uh, some, you know, stud time of year, and so we're subsidizing fireworks, those that don't like it, we're subsidizing them, uh, last year, and it's gonna continue on. And other things that we're subsidizing, we'll answer for you, maybe, so that goes on to others, and so that's where I don't know, how do you say, yes, we wanna, and, and I know it's, it's positive, it's feel good, but then then it's like, but now staff's more than that. I mean, you know, city exam table is fifteen, sixteen million in a deficit? I mean, we're gonna have some, probably some hard questions. And so this building that we're in is two million dollars to subsidize, two million, everybody uses it. So, um, I don't know how we keep continuing to go down this path of, uh, more of that, and those are my comments.
Thanks for the question, it's a very, uh, important one, and I'd be happy if, to serve on a subcommittee to talk to staff about the way to do that. That we should be looking at increasing rates, and we're not gonna have enough time to review all of that right here, right now. But if we have a subcommittee to look into raising rates, I, I'd be happy to serve on it.
Well, you can appoint a subcommittee tonight because it's not on the agenda, but, and also, they have a budget. And it's, it's now, um, they were put up in the decision today. Um, so, again, we're making decisions to make things, uh, reduced or free, and that's costing revenue. So are we just saying, we'll sit and talk about it, and then bring it back, and then readjust the budget? Staff's asking for a recommendation, you're saying, no, I want a subcommittee, so we can talk about it. Um, it's either a yes or no, and, and the police chief does have that flexibility and latitude, we've already issued that, so it can really be done, but the staff make the decision, um, and that was sort of to give real time, and it was reduced to a cut, not have to go through a, a month of us having reviewed this.
Uh, I, if I remember correctly, I think the police chief has the latitude when the, um, utilization is higher or lower, I don't think it's random latitude, it would be structured in my current across the way there. I don't think she needs to randomly raise rates, it's tied to utilization. And, you know, we have lower utilization, she had, you know, she has the right to lower the rates, but higher utilization, being excess of eighty-five percent, she has, or she could independently decide to go ahead and raise those rates, I think I have them out right, in the right direction, so I think it did their.
I think.
So, and, and I do recall, last time we had this conversation, um, then Chief Johansson was talking about utilization was well above a hundred percent. The council did balk at that, and said, no, 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 don't, don't raise the rates. So along the line, we, we've got to get this thing in balance, that's really, really critical, and we keep saying, pull the levers, whatever, whatever, the pulling the levers, whatever. We're giving away a lot, guys, we're giving away a lot, you gotta, you gotta at least acknowledge that, and say, that's okay, that's what you wanna do, and it is within your right to do this. The flip side of this is, we're gonna pay it somewhere, someone's gonna pay this sum. And it's really important to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and even when we talked about it going down a path, it's like, probably in our business permits, we were saying, if you take them back, eighty thousand or more, that, you know, they could go to other stabilizations, but, I don't know how that would be, that's something else, but anyway. So staff's asking for, uh, in regards to should the council select reduce or eliminate paid parking, which we had already began, um, increasing the paid parking rates by an amount that will recapture the revenue loss, as well as to change corresponding signage.
I, I will make the motion to allow staff with latitude to compensate for any, uh, poor decisions in this council meeting.
Second, and a little caveat to it, uh, is that, um, I believe in staff's recommendation, and that is trying to balance the budget, and ensure that this community can still have other programs and opportunities, so, um, I will second, we'll be twisting the motion a little bit better, I'll second it. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Opposed?
No.
So, um, two to three, so it fails, so, uh, rates will remain the same, and, um, sorry to the CFO, manager, to try to find uh, the deficits that's been added. Okay, last item, um, I had this at the last episode, if anybody, or something else, you can holler, and say something. And that was in regards to, uh, which would be Monday through Sunday, eight AM to ten AM, at all, uh, parking that is currently neutral. You no longer have rights for enforcement. Is it alright?
So, okay.
Is it enforcement or paying?
Paying, which if it's enforcement, that, that's different.
Okay, there are hangs. Technically, that's why we walk into this, two hour parking, that remains the same, it's just not paid, unless you're telling me something different.
No, I believe, I, I believe how you phrase it was correct. The attorney, okay, maybe you're crazy. Okay, last item, Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, uh, um, we changed the pay, the paid parking program to begin at ten AM. Keeping enforcement, so.
I'm clicking the motion made in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, opposed? No, that passes four, one. Okay, so, uh, staff, the attorney, and citizen. Last. Is, do, do you think we've answered the questions that we're here for this evening? Okay. Um, I do also wanna say that, uh, you know, it has been a challenge and a frustration, uh, that we've all faced, and I think even though we face it, uh, the staff faces it as well, and apartment, and contractors, and everybody in between, I can't believe you don't drive down the street, get a phone call, get a comment, um, people have those two roles and duties to do, and so, uh, it's just not us who has to bear that at the time. But I do want to think that, and what I'm really hopeful for, you know, what was on the plan, is that this goes forward. I think we spent the time, I think there's been lots of staff, uh, time and resources spent, it can be what's right, can be what the council asked. But my, again, wish is that we're not here a month ago from now, and saying I wanna bring something up. We need to let things take their time, and to see that the results of what's going to occur. Now, it won't happen overnight, so people need to have that expectation. Maybe that's something that needs to be communicated out, do not go down there, you know, next week, at AM, and expect not to have enforcement, so I just think we all need to do the community life by letting them know, and then the question's gonna come, so when? And we'll have to get that out all the time. Unless I miss a question.
No, and thank you, Mr. Murray, and I'll just remind you, this was a study session, we need to bring that all this back through resolution, so this will be unconcet. Um, for those that can't be unconcet, you have a master B schedule, we're gonna modify your society, we have a lot of things that we lose, and none of this will be happening tomorrow, this will be happening, we will work to create a plan and figure out how to implement all this, but you guys need to take your votes on this officially through resolutions in, in the master B, master B schedule.
And then also, if something new comes up, or information, it can be brought up, and the resolution can be amended, that, that being correct?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything else, uh? That? Thank you very much for all that, and then we are going to turn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on May thirteen, and you enter.